Okay, good evening, sorry that we were a few minutes late. We did have closed session and we have nothing to report out from closed session this evening. So I would like to call to order the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for this Tuesday, May 9th, 2017. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Skilman?
Here.
Councilmember Delosa?
Here.
Mayor Harvey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Thank you. And with that, would you please all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? So we will now move on to the approval of the minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda item.
Move to approve.
I would second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any?
I will abstain.
Okay.
I will abstain as well.
Okay, let that show a three-two vote. Then I will move on to the announcements for this evening. The City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open for Business Program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Ronert Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121 or visit www.sonoma library.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly, the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and by appointment. For more information, call (707) 794-0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle.com, N-I-X-L-E. The city offers a variety of recreational programs for all ages. See details on the web at kattatcity.org. Our next Coffee with a Cop event will be Wednesday, May 24th, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. at Your Sweet Expectations at (8099) La Plaza. Come have a cup of coffee and casual conversation with a Kattati police officer. The CITE enforcement, Combined Intensive Traffic Enforcement Operation will take place in Kattati on Tuesday, May 23rd. Officers from all County of Sonoma law enforcement agencies will be issuing citations for a variety of violations of the California Vehicle Code. This combined law enforcement agency enforcement has proven to have a lasting impact on negative driving behavior. So, with that, we have our honorary mayor, Caitlin Slate. Welcome back. How are you this evening?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. And did you, were you able to get together with your friends and find out any more information for us?
Yeah, so last time I was here, you guys asked me to talk to my peers at Rancho about involving themselves more in the community. And so we had an ASB meeting last week, and I brought it up to the leadership board. And I looked on you guys' website, about like, events and things going on. And I had brought up some things and they didn't really know about a lot of them. And so I was thinking maybe it would be more helpful if we, if you guys gave your days of events and such to our ASB advisor, Ms. Holman. It would, she's always looking for more events to have Rancho students go to. And they have announcements every day that talk about events and fundraisers that kids can go volunteer at. And I think that a lot of people would go.
That's a wonderful suggestion. Do any of you have any comments before I read her proclamation?
No, but thank you for checking into that for us, I appreciate it. And thank you for being here again tonight.
Yeah, I will just echo the comments from my councilmember. What was the person's name though? Who was the coordinator of ASB?
Jessica Holman.
Got it. Thank you.
This way?
Yeah, I didn't have the benefit of getting to meet you last time, but I want to thank you for being here both times. And really want to thank you for taking the time to looking into this too. I think, as my colleagues say, this sounds like a very good suggestion, and one that we could perhaps make a regular practice. So, it's funny, all these years of doing it, if you never know somebody puts a little elbow grease into something and finds something better to do. So, thank you.
Hi, Caitlin, what grade were you in?
I'm a sophomore.
Okay. So, on the ASB, are they by class years? Or is it all together?
It's all together.
Okay. So you probably work with my daughter Riley?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Well, thanks so much for participating. And that's a great idea, to get ahold of Ms. Holman and try to coordinate some of those events. Thank you.
I do think that's an excellent idea. And I saw our city manager over there busily writing, so I am sure that he will get ahold of her. So I do have, from the City Council of the City of Kattati, Caitlin Slate does hereby receive the title of honorary mayor. This title is conferred for your outstanding contribution to the cause of good government and as an expression of our appreciation for your support for this office. I do therefore confer this title with all the privileges and honors attendant to this distinction. And do you have anyone else with you tonight?
My mom.
Your mom. I'm sure she's very proud of you. Would you like a picture?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Selfie?
A selfie.
(inaudible)
Yes. Yes, George.
Thank you, Mayor. For the benefit of the audience, my name is George Beric. I'm a former city councilman here in Kattati. I wasn't going to speak on this issue tonight. I spoke about the honorary mayor program at the last meeting. But when I sat down afterwards, Mr. Delosa took it upon himself to berate me and insult me for my honest comments and contributions to the city on this program. So let me add that at the last city council meeting, we had two vacant seats here. Mr. Landman and Mr. Moore were absent for that meeting. And that would have been a wonderful opportunity to ask the honorary mayor to come up and have a seat for five or 10 minutes, to feel what it's like to be on a council. But that, that was a missed opportunity, but I wanted to bring that to your attention. But Mr. Delosa criticized me because I had mentioned that I had done some investigating and some research on this program, and I can't find one other city in the North Bay, or in California for that matter, that has an honorary mayor program. And the city officials that I've spoken with about this said that they absolutely do not have one, and they would not like to have one, and thought it would be inappropriate. But Mr. Delosa decided to question my, my research and said that he'd like to talk about this. Well, the fact is, Mr. Delosa, I have a phone number and I have an email address. And I think it's very cowardice of you, after two weeks, not to have called me on this and done this research on your own and looked into this. I think personally, this program is silly and has been a bigger disaster than the Meet the Mayor programs that you put on downtown, where the only people that show up are city staff members, city council members, their spouses, and the police chief. Now, Mr. Delosa, these kids and their parents need to hear that they are being used by this council, that it does no good, they're not prepared for this. We had one of the honorary mayors come up not too long ago. Mr. Moore asked, "Do you know what the program's about?" The nice little girl said, "No, I don't." Nobody is telling what the program is about. No one is explaining the program to the public. None of these kids are coming back. I don't see any of their parents coming back. And then when any of these kids come forward and they dare to question the city, you berate the kids. I remember, Mr. Delosa, one time you had this wonderful, nice gentleman here and criticized the city, and you said, "You know, well, you're so much smarter than we are." You know, that was so condescending when you said that. "Oh, yeah, don't give me that look." Okay? Remember? All right, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on the honorary mayor this evening? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council.
Yeah, I have a comment, sure. Thank you, Mr. Beric, for your, your points that you brought up. And berate is a pretty strong word, but if that's how you interpret things, I will definitely email you and get into a discussion regarding the honorary program, the honorary mayor program. So thank you for reminding me that I failed to do so, but I will do so.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, I will move on. Our first proclamation is for the Community Resilience Challenge. Do we have someone? Okay. I will read this to you. Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Kattati recognizing the Community Resilience Challenge. Whereas the City of Kattati is concerned about the health and well-being of its residents and seeks to create a healthy, sustainable, and livable community. And whereas in seven years of annual Community Resilience Challenge, over 5,000 people across Sonoma County have committed to complete nearly 31,000 actions to save water, grow food, conserve energy, reduce waste, and build community. And whereas Daily Acts is a key partner, providing programs and services that educate residents, students, businesses, and community leaders about sustainable practices. And whereas the City of Kattati can achieve its climate goals by growing and eating fresh local garden produce, greening its transportation, and creating energy and water-efficient homes, businesses, schools, and communities. Now therefore be it proclaimed on this ninth day of May, that the City Council of the City of Kattati commits to actively support the Community Resilience Challenge and its goals to inspire actions to save water, grow food, conserve energy, reduce waste, and build community, as a partner pledges to support the Community Resilience Challenge activities within the city and use city communications media and programming to promote the cultivation of healthy food, waste reduction, and energy and water efficiency. And be it further resolved that the City of Kattati actively declares the month of May Community Resilience Challenge Month in the City of Kattati as we work together for a healthier, more vibrant, and viable future.
Thank you. Yeah, for those that don't know, the Community Resilience Challenge is sort of like a New Year's resolution for the environment. You listed the five buckets of save water, grow food, conserve energy, reduce waste, and build community, most importantly, for me. Essentially, it's a call to action. There's a lot of low-hanging fruit people can take advantage of, whether you bike to work once, once a week, install a gray water system, sheet mulch your lawn, or even host a potluck for your friends. Once again, the bar is set pretty low for people to kind of take action towards a better climate, better environment, better community for everybody. So you go to dailyacts.org backslash C O C to register your actions. You get some free plants or some garden consultations. We have a lot of opportunities for people, and we like to incentivize people, and it's eighth year now. And lastly, together we're helping create a more connected, vibrant, and resilient community, one act at a time. Your actions will inspire others, and our shared problems will suddenly seem a lot less overwhelming when we work together. So we're very grateful to the City of Kattati for the proclamation in support of the Community Resilience Challenge, and thank you so very much for your time.
Thank you. Any comments?
No, I've actually just been passing along a lot of the Daily Acts activities and events that are going on to my mother, because she's interested in getting involved in the gardening especially. So, so thank you for all that you do. It's a really great organization, and I've enjoyed attending your events.
Thank you.
Again, yeah, same thing. I'm right around the corner from Pocket Park, so it's fun to go over there and work on the workdays. And I'm sorry I didn't participate this year in the garden tour like I did last year.
You'll be missed.
It was a lot of work, I'm just saying. There was a lot of talking I did that day, which may surprise people that I could say something, but there was a lot of talking that came out of me. But it's a great organization, and yeah, you guys, I love the list that you put out every year, just to help remind people about it. So, thanks for doing that.
Of course.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I'm just very impressed. It's funny how quick the time goes, seven years. The number that really jumps out, though, even beyond that, 31,000 actions. If I hear that correctly, that's really amazing when you look, because this is all about, you know, we can, government can make rules and give policies, but really, change doesn't happen unless it comes from the bottom up. And the simplest way to do that is for us to change habits. And 31,000 actions, I think that's a pretty strong step towards helping a lot of people perhaps find new ways to build their community, grow food, reduce waste, conserve energy, which by the way, is saving money for them too. So, congratulations on your work.
Thank you.
I would just echo what my colleagues have said. I think you guys are doing a pretty good job out there and reaching out to a lot of people, and that's where you start. So, thank you.
Thank you.
We will come down and take a picture with you. And yes, thank you for all you do. I'm just happy that some of the drought has gone away, so we can have a vegetable garden again this year.
Right.
Okay. Now we have a proclamation for National Public Works Week. Do we have? Hi, Al. Come on up. I don't know, they're, they're out of uniform. I can't, I can't recognize them. Hi, Susan. All right. So I will read this to you. Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Kattati recognizing May 21st through 27th, 2017 as National Public Works Week. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. Whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation and maintenance of public work systems and infrastructure, including water, sewers, streets, parks, and public buildings. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these systems and infrastructure. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these systems, as well as their planning, design, construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public work staff. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated public work staff is materially influenced by the community's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore be it proclaimed on this ninth day of May, 2017, the City Council of the City of Kattati does hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through May 27th as National Public Works Week in Kattati.
Thank you. Just wanted to say a few words.
All right.
I, I do, I do think it's important to, to latch on to the National Public Works Week effort and recognize our staff here. They like to stay under the radar, so this is difficult for them to come on out here, but they like to, their, their work is critical in the city, and the national theme is to, that public works connects us. And so, the obvious analogy there is with a bridge, but you know, just keeping the, our systems working, running, our street systems, our water, sewer, stormwater, there's just any number of many critical systems that we keep operational. And it's just, it's great to have this to recognize. I was going to say too, that you know, this is very difficult work, and these heavy equipment, machinery, and the public's not really aware all about the machinery we have. So we have, we're going to take the opportunity to have an open house on May 21st from 2:30 to 4:30, and this will be at the City's Corporation Yard at One Tribune Court. And we'll have all that machinery, heavy equipment out on display, and our staff will be there to just welcome people and talk about what we do. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to start this way this time.
I think it's great to recognize the work that you guys do, having known you guys for so many years and seen what you've done in nice weather and very inclement weather and difficult conditions through various city councils and staffs that some have been great to work for and some probably haven't. I commend you guys, and I think you do a terrific job. And you know, I look forward to down the road as you guys move on and the new ones that you recruit, and if they follow in your footsteps, we'll be fine. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just going to agree with what my partner here said. Whether it's 85 degrees and I see you out there with all the gear on in the bushes and in the thorns with the weed whacker, with weeds this high and bushes that high taking it down, or whether it's during some of the bad storms we recently had, and you were the ones that made sure that the flooding here was much less than some of the neighboring communities, because you go out there proactively and made sure that everything was clear and stayed clear. The bottom line is this place just wouldn't work without all of you. And more than that, the nice small-town touch, what I noticed, I see you guys all the time, whether I'm driving to the store, walking my neighborhood, and I notice everybody else in the neighborhood seems to know you all too and say hi and wave. That reflects well on you, and it's a good thing for our community. So thank you very much for everything you do.
Are you looking through me or?
At you.
Got it. I got the, I got the look from the mayor, so I'm on. Yeah, you guys, you know, you're totally the unsung heroes. We love the work our police department's been doing lately in the public eye. There's been some phenomenal work, and we were thanking them all the time, but I, I was just taking some really quick notes, but from landscaping to signage to sewer systems and a lot of other work. And Mark hit the nail on the head, I think, when the vice mayor said, "You know, if you look around Sonoma County, there was flooding in every community." And I was not aware, there might have been some flooding in town, maybe, but I didn't see it. And, and I will say that simply because you guys were on top of it. And you know, those are little things that are huge, and they kind of go unnoticed. So I just really want to thank you guys for all the work you've done for all the years you've been doing it, and all the more years you're going to continue to do it. So thank you very much.
And second to last, but not least, I wanted to thank you too for your responsiveness, because I know there have been times if somebody mentions something to me that I can let you guys know, and it's just, you're on top of it. So, thank you so much for your hard work and dedication to the city, and it really makes a big difference. So, we appreciate it.
Well, I don't really have anything that could add to that. I mean, I see you guys downtown all the time, either whether I'm walking or, or driving around, and you guys are always out there doing something. I cannot leave my house and go anywhere in Kattati and not see one of you somewhere. I will turn the next item over presentation. And you're all always very friendly, and people do, I agree with what was said, everybody We have a new police officer. I'll turn that over to the city manager.
Yes, thank you.
seems to know you, all of you. So we really, really appreciate all that you, all that you do for us in keeping our
Come on up. So I'm pleased to introduce tonight Officer Ryan Renkey, who's standing here in front
city a nice place to live in and keeping our infrastructure humming around.
of you. And so his family relocated to the city of Pleasanton, where he went to public school.
So with that, I will present this, and may we have another picture?
And after high school, he attended community college, and then joined the U.S. Marine
Do they want a picture?
Come on.
Craig, did you say that that open house was the 21st?
Corps and went to Iraq for a tour, a three-year, for three years in a tour in Iraq.
25th.
25th.
Thursday. 21st. I thought it was Monday.
And then after his military service, he enrolled in the Santa Rosa J.C. Police Academy to become
25th, sorry.
Yeah, 21st is a Sunday, I was like...
(applause)
Okay.
a police officer. And Ryan has prior law enforcement service at the city of Ronert Park, public safety, which is police, police and fire, solo fire experience maybe too, and also the sheriff's office. And because Ryan's already completed the FTO, or Field Training Officer Program, previously, he gets to have an abbreviated training here in Kattati. So that means, what that means in layman's terms is that he can start working solo pretty quickly, as opposed to being paired up with another officer for an extended training period. And I understand that Ryan is assured the chief, that, that, that he is going to be making Kattati police his home forever? Was that right?
(laughing).
Yeah. All right. And so with that, I, I want to introduce the chief, who's going to administer the oath of office.
Ryan, raise your hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Ryan Renkey.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties which I am upon to enter.
Come on. (applause).
So, Mayor and council, I'm pleased to introduce you to Marine Corps veteran and Kattati police officer, Ryan Renkey.
How are you doing?
Good. How are you doing?
Good. So I'm looking forward to working, you know, and serving Kattati. So, it should be a good time.
And would you like to introduce us to who you brought with you?
This is my girlfriend, Kendra.
Thank you. I know that any police officer needs the support of their family and loved ones, so I'm sure that she will stand by you during your service. And with that, any comments this way?
I'd just say, welcome, Ryan. I'm sure that you came to Kattati because it's so much better than Ronert Park. Maybe you just wanted to focus on the police work versus wearing two hats there. I wish you an extended career and welcome you.
Thank you.
Well, I have to admit, a small amount of glee in knowing that we actually purloined an employee from our sister city. But more than that, I'm just really pleased with the great background you bring already in law enforcement. That'll allow you to get on, out in the field quickly.
We have a new police officer. I'll turn that over to the city manager.
Yes, thank you. Come on up. So, I'm pleased to introduce tonight Officer Ryan Renke, who's standing here in front of you. And so, his family relocated to the city of Pleasanton, where he went to public school. And after high school, he attended community college, and then joined the U.S. Marine Corps and went to Iraq for a tour, a three-year, for three years in a tour in Iraq. And then, after his military service, he enrolled in the Santa Rosa J.C. Police Academy to become a police officer. And Ryan has prior law enforcement service at the city of Rona Park, Public Safety, which is police, police and fire, solo fire experience maybe too, and also the sheriff's office. And because Ryan's already completed the FTO, or Field Training Officer Program, previously, he gets to have an abbreviated training here in Kattati. So, that means, what that means in layman's terms is that he can start working solo pretty quickly, as opposed to being paired up with another officer for an extended training period. And I understand that Ryan is assured the chief, that, that he is going to be making Kattati Police his home forever, was that right? Yeah. All right. And so, with that, I want to introduce the chief, who's going to administer the oath of office.
Ryan, raise your hand. Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Ryan Renke.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties which I am upon to enter.
So, mayor and council, I'm pleased to introduce you to Marine Corps veteran and Kattati Police Officer Ryan Renke.
How are you doing?
Good, how are you doing?
Good. So, I'm looking forward to working, you know, and serving Kattati, so it should be a good time.
And would you like to introduce us to who you brought with you?
This is my girlfriend, Kendra.
Thank you. I know that any police officer needs the support of their family and loved ones, so I'm sure that she will stand by you during your service. And with that, any comments this way?
I'd just say, welcome, Ryan. I'm sure that you came to Kattati because it's so much better than Rona Park. Maybe you just wanted to focus on the police work versus wearing two hats there. I wish you an extended career and welcome you.
Thank you.
Well, I have to admit, a small amount of glee in knowing that we actually purloined an employee from our sister city. But more than that, I'm just really pleased with the great background you bring already in law enforcement that'll allow you to get on, out in the field quickly. I'm pretty impressed with the chief, too. I didn't realize we could actually have contracts that made sure that employees have to stay here forever. But there you go, well, you're here forever. So, welcome and thank you for choosing Kattati, Ryan. We look forward to a great career for you.
John.
Kind of hoping, thank you.
Okay.
She doesn't think I'm queued up anymore, that's fine, it's, I can get it. I was kind of hoping your girlfriend was going to stab you with the pen, because you could have made your first arrest right here, right now, would have been kind of fun. But that didn't happen, and that's maybe a good thing. So, yeah, Ryan, just welcome, thank you for your service certainly in Iraq and protecting us in many ways, protecting the whole country. And now your focus is more on Kattati, and it's a much smaller scale, so something you, I'm sure you'll be able to handle. But just really want to welcome and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
He looked at my notes, I swear. No, I wanted to thank you, first of all, for your service to our country. And thank you very much for choosing Kattati for your next career move, and hopefully you'll be pleased to be part of our family and community and stay for quite a while. So, thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Thank you again, and thank you for choosing us, and we, we wish you well, and I guess we'll see you out and about soon.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so onward, approval of the final agenda, do we have any changes?
Thank you, mayor. So, no, no changes to the agendized items, but I do want to draw your, or bring your attention to a couple items on the dais and on the back counter. One is for item, this consent calendar, item 12B, which is the application for the farmer's market. The people that put on the farmer's market gave us an amended application, which is, just so you know that it's there as part of the process tonight. And also 12B, the Russian River Regional Stormwater Resource Management and Monitoring Plan item. Also, on the dais and on the back counter is the, a corrected MOU between the city of Ukiah and the city of Kattati, as well as the letter that gets attached to it, authorizing the, and that item authorizes the city manager to execute the MOU. So, with that, just wanted to draw your attention to those.
Thank you. Then we will move on to citizens' business and public comment for the consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar, or any matter not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2016-1, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. And with that, do we have any speaker cards? No. Anybody wanting to speak on citizens' business? Yes, Lori.
I once again want to ask for the resignation of Mark Lamon because of the conflict of interest in issues. He is a city councilman, he is a director of Sonoma Clean Power, and he is paid staff for Lean Energy U.S., and that is a FPC, FPPC, Financial Conflict of Interest. Sonoma Clean Power is, has, he's voted on ones, he's never mentioned that he works for Lean Energy U.S. during many votes on the council, and he, Sonoma Clean Power has investors, are same ones that are with Village Walk. And so, those, all these conflicts of interest you all know about and you do nothing about. There's, everybody breaks the code of ethics here readily with no abandon. You don't follow laws, you make your own laws. I had an information request, and you didn't, you sent me back my own emails instead of doing the current law, following the spirit of the law, and now you're going to have civil penalties when you go to court with me because you're, of the games you play. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of not having a city council that cares about people, that doesn't have conflicts of interest. The planning commissioner, one of the planning commissioners run, has a conflict of interest with 100 Valparaiso, because he's at, he runs the little strip mall with, down there. You, I am so tired of conflicts of interest and you're not doing anything, and then you take it out on me. You make me the horrible person, and that is wrong, that needs to stop. I am the person, you need to just stop doing wrongdoings instead of me treating me like I'm this horrible person. I didn't, I'm just the one pointing it out. I'm the one now who has the people's trust. I'm the one that people are coming to. You don't know how many people have been coming to me about every issue in this city that you guys don't deal with, and it's because I tell the truth. I have ethics, and you all need to develop some. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, George?
At the last city council meeting, we discussed numerous occasions where these meetings were not properly webcasted or recorded on video. And the city apparently tried to place blame with another, with the company who installed this or manages this account. I thought that the information that was provided was erroneous, so I decided, I told the council I was going to do some investigating on my own. When I sat down, Mr. Deloso, again, tried to lecture me that I had no right to do any investigating, and that this was completely city business, and basically to keep my nose out of it. And I want to say, Mr. Deloso, I don't know who in the hell you think you are, sir, to say such a thing, to tell a member of the public that they cannot go ask questions of companies that do business with the city of Kattati? What are you going to do, start telling the journalists, also that they can't also investigate and do their own research? I don't know where you learned civics, sir, because you didn't learn it here. I can, I can do an investigation, and I have done an investigation, and I went down and talked to the company PSD in Santa Rosa. I sat down with them and asked them, and they said it is absolutely the city's fault that these meetings are not properly webcasted and recorded. They have no responsibility, it's all done in-house. Okay, so, you know, you're trying to throw them under the bus, and I think it's unfair. And if you're going to have Mikey, police chief, arrest me for calling you a liar, then go ahead. We, the taxpayers, we, the residents in this town, will meddle, will investigate any city business we want to, because you work for us. Yes, Mr. Moore, you work for us. You seem not to get it, you don't seem to ever want to ever get it, because people like Mr. Moore, you know, devout communists, socialists, don't like this whole idea that citizens could actually speak up and investigate and hold city councils accountable. And Mayor Harvey, the last meeting, you said that you and your husband took it upon yourselves to power-watch the front of city house, the city hall some years ago. We city council members and members of the citizens cannot do that. The city manager's already told us, it's a liability. We cannot volunteer. Well, how is it that you get to volunteer, but over the years, after all the volunteering I've offered, they've said no? We volunteered to adopt a park when the city was going under budget crises, we volunteered so many things in the city manager's office, and the council said, no, we don't want the liability, we won't take the liability. How is it that you got the special treatment, that you get to volunteer? I think the citizens would like to hear about this. And I appreciate your effort, don't get me wrong. It's the double standard, and the punishing of people who don't go along with the clique on the city council, who dare to offer constructive criticism, that get punished.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else wishing to speak? Yes, Eric?
On the plus side, the downtown sidewalks have been getting washed for the first time in many years. It is taking time, but it's long overdue. The crews are out cutting weeds and are very active on Eagle and other streets, and are as always doing their job. It would be great if all areas were trimmed. The old bank building is set to close escrow later this month, and the new owners wish to work with the citizens of Kattati and are already visible in our community. In fact, I spoke with the prospective buyer this morning. Marshway has new signs and mostly painted sidewalks, no parking in fire lanes, et cetera. Some work still needs to be done around fire hydrants and securing the Laguna de Santa Rosa. Sad to say, but many ideas that some of you claimed were good simply have not happened. No water reclaiming or rainwater catchment, et cetera, no citizen survey, no city managers' report in our local paper, to name but a few. Years ago, I suggested that the police and fire district share the city-owned land and build a joint facility where the fire district now is. This was before the multimillion-dollar clubhouse behind City Hall, and it was even before the fire district doubled in size, the fire station, excuse me. I argued that it would share services, one dispatcher, one workout facility, bathrooms, conference rooms, locker rooms, et cetera, et cetera. The emergency response would be in tandem and resources would be maximized. Of course, this made no sense to Kattati, despite it being the most, the model used throughout the rest of America in all 50 states. Imagine if we had built a mixed-use station there. If we'd done so, the original huge flag might not have vanished between 2:00 and 5:00 in the morning, never to be seen again. First time Gerard and John had guns drawn on them by the Kattati police while the thief vanished without a trace. Gerard moved Sali Tomatoes out of town, and John and J&amp;D Tattoos is no longer here either. The next robbery came after weeks of research by the thieves posing as street people, until they terrorized the bank staff and scooted again without a trace. The bank even moved down the street after that. Years ago, a consultant was paid way too much to determine staffing for the Kattati Police Department, and this expert determined that four sergeants should supervise officers. At one point, there were four sergeants and a chief, lieutenant, corporals, even a captain. Major G was supposed to restore services from what we were told, and still bathrooms are closed and there's slight supervision of staff. City Hall is open Monday through Thursday with breaks and lunch, with no rotations to provide services for the public. On holidays, the Nixon Mondays, means city shutdown, and of course, the Veterans Day and other holidays fall where they may, and no business then either. Public Works workers seem to work other schedules. The police are often not supervised at night, or dazed for that matter, especially on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sundays. I've spoken to the city manager, and he assures me we are fine in an emergency.
Eric, are you almost done?
Almost done.
Okay, thank you.
As he has everybody's cell number. I hope the earthquake, food, fire, attack, or even simple gunshots come in convenient times, Monday through Thursday, and not at lunch. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I will close citizens' business. Does anyone have any comments on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will close the consent calendar items. Oh, okay, yes?
If I might briefly, before we move on. So, we had a rather difficult allegation of a conflict of interest, that's fairly serious thing, so I just wanted to comment on that very briefly, and hopefully very clearly to all of you here and anybody that might be watching the podcast. And I want to state for the record that there's absolutely no, let me repeat that, no conflict of interest whatsoever involved with my work with Lean. I do take my work for all of you very seriously, and as you can well imagine, I looked very carefully and did my due diligence over a year ago to ensure that there would be no conflict, and I have continued to do so at every single junction since that point. For the complainant, if you wish to file yet another complaint against me with the FPPC, you certainly have the right to do so, but I'm telling you now that the result will be the same as before, they will find no conflict of interest and no wrongdoing. Thank you for the time, Madam Mayor.
Okay, anyone else? No? John, did you have anything?
I just want to clarify for the record. It's difficult to determine anyone else's in any arena, whatever philosophy they have. So, really using that measuring stick to say that somebody is a devout communist is a pretty strong allegation. And I am a registered member of the Democratic Party, not the Communist Party.
All good to go, and hopefully we will have no other, no other interruptions. And so, with that, I would like to move on to direction on future agenda items. Anybody? Nope? This way? No? Okay, then I will move on to the consent calendar.
I will move to approve items A, B, C, D, and E.
One second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nope. That is a 5-0 vote. And we will move on to public hearings, and we have item 13A, vesting tentative map amendment for 100 Valparaiso Avenue. And Ms. Parker, will we get a presentation?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, council members. I want to make a few introductions, and then I'm going to turn it over to Lori. Tonight, Lori McNabb will be giving the presentation for us. We also have available Olivia Irvin, who did the sequoia addendum. Steve Davidson, Battalion Chief with Rancho Adobe Fire District is here, as well as Craig Scott, our city engineer. And finally, on the applicant's side, Deileen Whitlock with W-Trans is also here tonight. So, I think, I think between all of us, we'll be able to answer questions. I also wanted to clarify something with the plans, in case it's confusing for people. Because this was a continued... Because this was a continued item for March 28th, what we asked the applicant to update was the result of the March 28th concerns and the discussion on April 11th. So when you're looking at the architectural and the landscape plans, you'll see some inconsistencies between that and the civil plans. And we realize those inconsistencies are there. Those, the architectural plans that have KTGY's name on them and the landscape plans that have Gazardo's name on them, those will be updated to match the civil plans prior to final design review. So I just wanted to make that statement, in case it was confusing to the public. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lori McNabb.
Good evening. So this is a continued public hearing for 100 Valpriso. This is a vesting tentative map amendment. So this project is requesting several entitlements. So they're first and foremost requesting to amend their 2009 vesting tentative map. And with that, they also are requesting preliminary designer view, a hillside development permit, a minor variance for height, which I'll go over. And then also, for your consideration, is the approval of an addendum. It's under SEQA. So this is the subdivision that was approved in 2009. In 2009, the city council approved a 62-lot subdivision at 100 Valpriso with 10 affordable units. The dark blue lines you see are all public streets that existed in the subdivision. And as you can see, in 2009, these two streets stubbed through at Honor and Dorfman. And then in research, staff found that these two streets were stubbed in 1988. So they've always been there since 1980, I should say. These light blue lines represent public, or excuse me, private lanes that were part of the subdivision map, and on those private lanes would have been townhomes. The subdivision also had several open space areas in green. It had a, the historic home on the property in that blue rectangle was going to be rebuilt and used as a community center. And then in 2009, the historic building, which is on the site right now, was left as an accessory building to a new home. That has changed in the new map. I'll go over all those things. So this map, approved in 2009, is still valid today. They could go build it if they wanted to. But they're wanting to amend the map. That's why we're here tonight. So this is 2017 vesting tentative map amendment. Again, you can see the blue lines are the public streets. There are no private lanes or alleys in this project. It's gone from previously 10 affordable units to now seven affordable units. And I've, in the yellow, that's not a rectangle, but the yellow areas where those seven units will be. They have a stormwater treatment area, which we'll have some nice pictures of. I'll show you later in the presentation. And which I think is a nice change with this map is the historic structure, which is still standing, is now being left on its own parcel, and it's going to be developed as a pocket park. So this is some of the architecture from the 2009 map. In 2009, they had several architectural types. They had single-family homes. There were stacked units, which are in a unit-over-unit kind of condo. There were townhomes, and there were duplexes or duet units. This is the architecture for the 2017 map. These are three of the four different architectural styles proposed. There, as I said, there's seven affordable units. Of the seven affordable units, six are duplexes, and one is a single-level accessible home. This is that home. Here are the duplex units. And as you can see, the architect proposed these to have two different architectural schemes. And when this went before the design review board, or committee, sorry, the design review committee, they recommended that the duplexes have one consistent architectural scheme. The planning commission agreed, and I talked about that at the last, the first time this came to the city council. The other change, I want to say, I don't know if there's a better way to, I'm going to talk, go back to this map. This is another architectural change that the design review committee asked for, is on these sides, street elevations, so all of the homes that have sides that face on a street, the design review committee wanted more enhanced architecture. The way it was proposed, there was a lot of fencing on those side streets, side-facing facades. So they wanted less fencing, more landscaping, and more architectural detail. So those are two recommendations that have come along. So this is, I have this slide in here, so you can see, you can see, there's a meandering sidewalk. So instead of a straight sidewalk on Jagel, we have worked with the applicant to have a meandering sidewalk. So when you're looking up Jagel, there's kind of more interest and variation in the sidewalk. And then this is, these are some photos showing the types of landscape materials that they proposed. This is that stormwater treatment area that's out on Valpriso. They have some seat walls. There will be a dry, kind of dry creek swale and educational signage. And this is the historic stone building, pocket park. There'll be, you know, a pathway, some seating, and then some fencing that will block off access to the building. It's just there to visit and read educational signage, but not really to go in. Staff has recommended approval for the design review permit because we believe that this, they're proposing a mix of architectural styles. They are proposing housing that's promoted by the City of Cattati's design guidelines. They have proposed an interesting streetscape, and all of the homes have usable front porches. In the earlier, earliest submittals, the homes did not have usable front porches, but your design guidelines require that. So along the way, they now each have eight-foot porches like your guidelines want. This came before you originally on March 28th, 2017. At that public hearing, there were concerns voiced by the neighbors for privacy on the homes in Hunter's Ridge or Lasker Knoll's neighborhood. And there's also many concerns about the cut-through traffic that was going to result as a, with this subdivision. At this public hearing, the applicant also asked for relief from three conditions of approval from staff. One of those was undergrounding of utilities. They wanted, the applicant also asked to reduce the number of homes that were required to have solar. And lastly, they wanted to reduce the amount of soil they were exporting from the site. So I believe it was April 11th that we all came back, and we had a focus meeting just on these issues. So I went over the hillside development permit entitlement. This is a hillside development permit entitlement. This project's required to get a hillside development permit because it has slopes over 10%. All those kind of neon-green areas you see on the map are areas over 10%. And then I believe the red is over 15%. They have to get a development review permit, or excuse me, hillside development review permit. In 2009, as part of their permit, the city council put conditions on them, on them that to get their hillside development permit, they weren't allowed to have upper-story decks because they felt that upper-story decks would invade the privacy of adjacent homes. And they also wanted the outdoor patios to be two feet below grade, again, to provide privacy for adjacent existing homes. And also, the 2009 map wanted two homes, excuse me, two lots eliminated along Lund Hill, so that there were less homes looking out towards the Lund Hill lots. This new map has changed in many ways, and we think, because it's changed in so many ways, those 2009 conditions aren't required. But these are some of the things that, through the project design, that we are getting, or the city is getting. The perimeter lots in the old map, the homes were only set back 20 feet from the rear property line. Now those homes are all set back 30 feet, so they're further from existing lots or existing homes. The 2009 map wanted, or excuse me, required a landscape buffer. We are continuing that and still requiring a landscape buffer. And this map is less dense. So at the first public hearing at city council, the neighbors' lots, 7 through 18, the neighbors adjacent to those lots came out and talked about how they felt that these, their privacy was going to be compromised with this subdivision. So staff and the staff of the developer went away and studied that and brought you cross-sections and studied the distances from these new homes to the existing homes. And through that, decided that what the developer was proposing still ensures privacy. However, we did find those two homes that are in orange or yellow, the landscape buffer for those homes are going to, we're requiring them to have larger trees so that when they're installed, that the privacy screen is there. The other homes, we feel that in time, the screen will grow up and the privacy will The other issue that we studied, the applicant went away and had their traffic consultant review, the traffic calming devices, to see if the subdivision is going to increase cut-through traffic to the adjacent neighborhood. And with these traffic calm, or the traffic, the traffic calming devices are with these that are proposed, they don't think there'll be many more trips coming through. And Deileen could talk more to that, because I know I'm not saying the right words. But this subdivision is proposing to have new stop signs, excuse me, always stop, always stop. And through this process, the speed bump is new. The speed bump is not something that we discussed before, but something that came through since March 28th. And also, the traffic consultant has recommended that an off, an additional stop sign be placed at Dorfman and Honor. It's now, I believe, it has, it's not an always stop now, it's just a one-way stop. So it'll become an always stop. So at the last meeting of the 28th, the developer asked that they be allowed to export less soil. The result of that is because they're exporting less soil, homes will get taller. So if homes get taller, they need a variance to go over height. So they've designed a map that they only need a variance for height on 10 of the lots. So 10 of the lots, they're asking for a two-foot height variance. Those are the 10 lots that will have homes no greater than 30 feet tall. And I think of them, only two of them are even 30 feet. All the others are between 28 and 30. And staff has gone through the findings for the variance and believes that they can be made and is recommending approval for the minor variance. So at the meeting of the 28th, the applicant also asked for relief from the undergrounding the utilities. And after the council heard the concerns, no relief is being given, and the condition still stands that we want the utilities undergrounded. Now going to turn it over to Vicky, so she can speak to the general plan policies that will be implemented with this.
Thank you, Lori. So one of the major things that we have to do at a staff level when we're reviewing new subdivisions is to review them for consistency with the general plan. That's true for most, well, all of the land use actions that we take. It's a little more stringent with subdivision maps because state law, through the government code, requires that any subdivision that is approved be consistent with the general plan. So it's a little heightened, a little more heightened with subdivision maps or parcel maps. So here, we've just quantified the land use and the circulation policies of the general plan that are implemented through development of the subdivision as it's designed. And these land use policies are geared around, as is the entire general plan, is geared around infill development. The general plan realizes, as we all realize, that our city is largely built out, and so most of our vacant parcels, with the exception of some on the west side, would really be infill development parcels. So when you read the general plan, there's, there's lots of incentives and lots of objectives about developing on infill sites first, whenever possible, prioritizing our capital facilities improvements around those infill sites so that we're not extending our service facilities out to the perimeter before we're successful on our infill development. So largely, these land use policies are about logical and orderly development, focusing growth on infill locations. So recognizing that the majority of our sites are infill sites, the requirement for road connections, among many, many, many other objectives in the general plan, is still there. So we weighed all of those potential nuisance things that could come from denser infill development projects. And the general plan acknowledges that those are potentially more, that they, they come with issues that are a little harder to solve, such as noise, odors, traffic, all of those. So my point here is that the general plan has acknowledged that throughout its process and certainly in its adoption in 2015. And the focus of the general plan, of course, is, it's a citywide document that governs development, citywide, meant to be implemented citywide without regard to specific parcels, specific applicants, specific situations. Of course, the policies and objectives are written more broadly than a land use code regulations, so that you, you can have that flexibility to evaluate specific sites, and you can either adjust your conditions of approval or your map design to respond to those. But by and large, it is meant to take itself away from day-to-day decision-making and sit up above that as guiding direction for making those day-to-day decisions. With circulation, you've seen these policies before, but these are the ones that are relevant to subdivisions in, in infill locations. And the last one there, 1.119, require new development to include effective linkages to the surrounding circulation system for all modes of travel to the extent feasible. So hearing the neighbor concerns, even after we did the circulation review to look at traffic calming measures, hearing that the neighbors still had concerns about the cross-neighborhood traffic, we focused on that policy to say, to ask ourselves, is it really feasible? That's the only question in this set of policies, is, is it feasible to connect those roads? And I realize this is a hard message for people, but yes, it's feasible. It's, the grading works, the road standards can all be implemented, the lotting of the proposed new subdivision works. It's all feasible to connect these roads. And indeed, not only is it feasible, but it's been planned for since 1988, when the Lasker Knoll's subdivision was built. I pulled up that old map to make sure that that was the intention, and it certainly was that those streets would be stubbed out for future connections. So given that, there is no way to approve a new subdivision that is inconsistent with the general plan, and in this case, in not connecting those roads. So So I think there's been a little confusion and we probably should have explained this more clearly, but you can't redesign the subdivision to exclude those roads and still be consistent with the general plan. And if we can't, cannot be consistent with the general plan, we cannot approve the subdivision. So it's a tough decision and I realize that it's, for a lot of people, it's not a decision. But again, the general plan, we went through that process. We spent three years on that general plan, if not a little bit more, setting policies that we thought were fair, that achieved the goals citywide that we were trying to achieve, not just certainly for circulation, but for land use, for economic sustainability, for a variety of goals. And at the staff level, we apply those. We tell developers, this is what you must do in order to be compliant with what we as a community want to see happen in our physical development. So I want to, we can come back to this map if folks want to see this circulation, but it's really just meant to say, this is the way that we believe it achieves those general plan goals is, again, it ties an existing community to a new community and vice versa, and ties them both through an interaction to the larger arterial streets that achieve our circulation goals citywide. I've just given you the citation here from the government code. No tentative subdivision or parcel map can be approved unless the city finds that the subdivision, together with design and improvement provisions, is consistent with all aspects of the general plan. So that leaves us with really two options. To approve the proposed vesting tentative map that's before you tonight with the road connections or to deny the amendment which would allow the 2009 project to stand. So those are the, really, the only two options for the council to remain consistent with the general plan. And I want to point out a couple of things about the 2009 map. The 2009 map also included those road connections. Even if we were to amend the general plan to take out that policy, which I'm not sure we want to do that, but even if we did, they've got a vesting tentative map. So no future general plan amendments would apply to them. They can still build the 2009 project exactly as it is, stands today. So again, I realize that that's, that all of these things are difficult. They're not meant to be difficult. It wasn't anybody's goal when we adopted the general plan to impose things that this particular neighborhood didn't want to have happen. But when you take our citywide objectives and apply them to individual projects, there are going to be situations that not everyone is happy with. It would be different if we were a brand-new city in greenfield development and everything was designed and got built in some prescribed order and there weren't infill locations, but that's not who we are. We are nothing but infill locations. And so again, I realize that these are hard decisions, but those two options are what is, what are the only two ways the council can go tonight. Just to move quickly on from that, and we're happy to answer questions about that. Among the actions tonight are, of course, the SEQA approvals that need to be made. And we've prepared the addendum to the 2009 mitigated NEG deck, which has been in the packet. I might also add just quickly, that addendum was updated to reflect the reduced grading and the traffic, the traffic improvements. I'm drawing a blank on the term, but traffic calming, thank you. And also, if you agree with the Planning Commission and DRC recommendations, the approval would also carry forward their recommendations for consistent architecture for the two units which comprise a duplex. So rather than trying to make them look like individual, single-family homes, designing them together to look like one structure, same color, same design, same materials treatments. The different treatments for side face, street-side facing facades that Lori talked about a few minutes ago, and then the no Dorfman connection through to Feller from Jagla to Feller. And so given all of that, we are at this recommendation that staff is continuing to recommend the Planning Commission and DRC recommendations to the city council to approve the addendum to the 2009 mitigated NEG deck, approve the amended vesting tentative map with no Dorfman connection to Feller at a total of 47 lots, with seven of those being below market rate affordable units, preliminary design review, hillside development permit, and the minor variance for a maximum of two feet, two-foot height increase. We do want to make one recommended additional condition of approval. And this is if the council agrees with those design changes, we would want to add a condition that required the plans to be updated to reflect those changes on the side, elevations in the BMR units, the duplex units prior to final design review. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
No, none at this time. And I appreciate you clarifying with the 2009 plan, because that was my understanding before, but I appreciate having laid out. So thank you.
Just a very quick numeric one. I may have written the wrong number down, but on 2009 map, what's the approved number of lots? Is it 60-something?
62. The map, the map was 62, but there was a condition of approval to remove those two lots along the Lund Hill line buffer, so it would be 60 lots.
60.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lori clarified, it was 64 to 62.
64 to 62. Yeah, and at this point, I don't think I have any more questions for staff, so thank you.
Okay. Do you have a question?
Two relatively quick questions, I hope at least for staff. First of all, we talked about the height variance that we were considering granting. And I just wanted to double-check, I'm pretty sure we know this, but just for the peace of mind of the people in the neighborhood, this change in height 20 to 30 feet in a few lots that were mentioned, none of these lots impact any of the privacy areas we previously marked out or any of the lot lines or, excuse me, not lines, angles of sight that we laid out to make sure there were no privacy concerns. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
I mean, it's the first thing, obviously, if people are concerned about the heights of some of the buildings, when you hear some are moving, we want to get an answer to that, so thank you.
Yes, that grading, we didn't mention it, but that grading also, it's a reduction of some 5,000 cubic yards of dirt. So it decreases the number of, it decreases the days involved in grading, for sure. It also decreases the number of truck trips by, I think, about 25%.
Yeah, I see the clear benefit there, but I just wanted to touch base on that because I know that's been an important concern for everybody in the community. One other thing about traffic I wanted to ask, in our travel assessment, it mentions that using cut-throughs through the neighborhood versus going the more typical Valpris or the old red route in the two different directions, it was a little bit longer, roughly a minute 75 seconds to up to almost a minute and a half, about 81 seconds. I wanted to ask if that extra travel time was assessed including the additional stop signs that we're considering and the speed bump or without that? Does anybody know that?
It was without those, I believe. Yes, that's correct.
I'm looking, I could just go with a nod or something, but I'm assuming, at least from personal experience, if something's even relatively close, if you add speed bumps and stop signs, that makes, I don't know how you quantify that, but I'm assuming that makes that a lot wider. Would that not be a fair assessment? Okay, thank you.
The only questions I had were, again, regarding the traffic and the additional stops. Are those not overkill on those stops in that little area? We're not anticipating that much through traffic in there? And does that counter to environmental concerns with cars stopping at a stop sign? I mean, do we lose some in environmental component? And the noise factor for the residents versus the safety factor that they would perceive to pick up?
I think there would definitely be more noise associated with speed control and then the acceleration of braking and acceleration with the stop signs. It wouldn't, it isn't likely to cause, it is not going to cross any SEQA threshold for analysis. So given that the neighbor's primary concern was speed and cut-through, the objective was to make it as inconvenient as possible for cut-through traffic. So in that regard, I wouldn't probably think that it was, if that's your goal, I don't think they're overkill.
Thank you.
If speed, if speed were the goal, they would, for sure. If efficiency was the goal, speed and efficiency was the goal, then certainly they would be overkill.
Thank you.
Okay. You done?
I am.
Okay. Vicki, I have a couple of minor questions on the conditions. Is it easiest if I give you the condition number?
Sure.
So condition 13 says at the intersection of Dorfman and Feller have a decorative stamped color. Isn't that, shouldn't that condition maybe go away? Since this doesn't have a Dorfman and Feller connection?
That's just a question. Oh, that, actually, that may be a typo. That, it should be Dorfman and Jagla, I believe.
Okay, all right. I wasn't, I wasn't sure. And then, this is just very minor, on 24, there's an extra word. Solar is kind of after the sentence. That's pretty, thank you. Then I was looking at 31 and it was talking about responsibility for watering and those type of things to keep the dust down. And it talks about giving a designated person with their phone number on all the activities. I am making an assumption, and I just want to validate that, that I assume that this is a person that would be called on the weekends and holidays if, you know, we have a dry condition and there starts to be dust going around and whatever, because obviously, construction staff wouldn't necessarily be there. Is that a correct assumption?
Yes, it is. We require it to be posted on the construction fencing or an otherwise visible location that any resident or city staff member can easily locate that name and number.
Okay, all right. Item 38, how far along are we on the roof? It, yes, Neil. Since I can't go up there, I can kind of see from afar, but I wasn't sure where we were at.
Today at 5:15, Guy Chambers, our architect, and I went there physically, marched around the whole place. It's done.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I just was curious. So then, I'm imagining 38 might change a little bit or something then?
Well, we haven't completed final inspections for it yet. So the work may be, and I know the building official has done inspections along the way, but it has not been finalized or released yet, so I probably want to keep that.
Okay. And then I have one other item I want to talk about after public comment, but it looks to me like 48 and 50 are the same. I could be missing a subtle difference, but they appeared kind of the same to me.
That's an engineering condition, so I'm going to have to refer that one to Mr. Scott. But we can certainly.
Okay, I wasn't sure because they were worded a little bit differently, but very similar, so. And that's all my questions for right now. And with that, I will open this up for public comment.
Hi there. My name is Tanya McGinnis, 8825 Lund Hill Lane. The infamous lot that in the '09 approval, the city council approved one house. And in the 2017, we're up to three houses. So the development shrank and we grew 300%. And those, we are in half an acre. And I always kind of prided Katari in being rural. And we have half an acre with a big hill behind us. And now we're going to have three houses. Even with those trees, they're still going to see us and we'll be in a fishbowl. My second question is, even in the '09 plan and the 2017 plan, there were trees. My question is, with the cost of water in Katari, who's going to be responsible for keeping those trees alive? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Hi, my name is Heidi Bailey. I live at 8507 Dorfman Drive. First, I would like to thank councilmember Deloso for paying a visit to our neighborhood and walking through and knocking on my door. I only wish more of us were homes to talk to you. It speaks volumes, volumes to me on this council and the Planning Commission, who hasn't heard a word any of this has said. Our children play in the street. Try sending a 15-year-old down to Helen Putnam to tell him to go down the slide because he can't play out front because of all the traffic. Thank you for putting in all the stop signs. That will make a bit of difference. I'm sure all the homes along Honor Place are grateful that bushes will be growing in 10 years and they'll have privacy in 10 years. My other comment is parking. At the last meeting, when we were shown the presentation, we were told the six affordable housing units were limited on parking. Councilmember Landbin made a comment about advertising bicycles only and everybody thought it was really funny and laughed. Then after public comment, Ms. Parker indicated that there was plenty of parking and that people on Honor and Dorfman should not worry about parking. That wasn't even touched tonight. No one's mentioned anything about the parking nightmare this is going to cause. You are adding 47 homes, which could possibly be under 100 cars if each home had two cars, which is not realistic in this day and age. We have four cars. I have two teenagers that drive and my husband and I each drive. So we have four cars. Where are they going to park? I have not heard that there's been any additional parking allowed for them. So parking is going to filter onto Dorfman and onto Honor. And the people that live right there are going to have to park up further, which is going to impede everybody up further. And everybody's going to be parking pretty soon. I'm walking half a block to get to my house. I don't think that's fair. Obviously, you have two choices to vote for 2009 or this. It's better than 2009. I'm very disappointed at the connectivity having to be through traffic. Connectivity could be an emergency lane. Why can't we do that? It still connects the neighborhoods. A community garden would connect the neighborhoods more than having, we could be friendly with them instead of being pissed off at them that they're taking our parking spaces. It's not going to be a friendly interaction if there's through traffic. If there's an emergency lane, great. We can walk over there, they can walk to us. Emergency vehicles can get through. It'll never happen because the fastest place to get to an emergency is a straight line. They're not going to cut through our neighborhood and speed bumps and stop signs to get to that neighborhood. Then there was, it was brought up that in case we have to evacuate, we should have a road. I've lived there for more than 20 years, never had to evacuate. And I think that if I do have to evacuate, I won't be fleeing to the next property. I think I'm fleeing out to Redwood Highway and getting the hell out of Dodge. I don't agree with having through traffic. The speed bumps are going to help, the stop signs are going to help, but I see, I have yet to hear a good. yet to hear a good reason why we have to have cars. Why can't we have a walk path, a bike path, emergency vehicle path, where we're not having parking spaces taken up? It makes no sense.
Excuse me, Heidi, are you almost?
I am done. I'm done. It just makes no sense, and my grandma had a great saying, and if it doesn't make sense, it's usually gift-wrapped cow dung.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, George?
I was on the city council in two thousand nine, and I remember this project being proposed as sixty-six units. It was whittled down to sixty-two and approved, over my objections, and I was told how ridiculous I was and how unrealistic forty-eight units would be, and that the developer could not make any money, so on and so forth. But I can't help but think back on, maybe they recalled the wrong council members, so out of touch with reality, but I digress. Look, there's been a lot of talk of children playing in the streets on Dorfman and Honor and so forth, and not once has any council member asked the police chief to come up and comment on what the law is on children playing in the street. People have accused me of wanting to arrest children and everything else and all the other BS. But the fact is, you have a police chief here, you should have asked him his thoughts on this and what the city's responsibility is, if they remain silent and they keep it zipped and not wanting to make a comment on the liability for the city if children are hurt through all, by playing in the streets with all this additional traffic. Because I guarantee you, in the years to come, if a child is hurt in that street and the city has not taken a stand, has ignored the responsibility and duty to tell what the law is, you're going to be held liable, along with the driver, on injuries to the kids, because, you know, you have a duty. You have a duty to spell out what the law is here. You're either promoting playing in the streets, like Mayor Lisa Moore did, remember when she used to say, hey, all the kids play in the streets? And the police chief sat there, wouldn't say anything, wouldn't say anything to the boss. But you have a responsibility to at least address this issue, because some of these neighbors here have brought this up. And I don't know what, you know, when you talk about the general plan being a guiding document over the decades, where was this guiding document when you wanted connectivity from East Cattati Avenue down Arthur Street? And the residents on Arthur Streets objected and protested. They wanted that street closed, and the city wanted it open. So what did the residents do? They dumped garbage. They dumped lumber. They dumped yard debris, and the city had to keep picking it up. And the residents continued to dump it there until the city gave in and closed the street. I'd hate to see these people do this here, to have to force the city through an emergency of all the junk left in the street to close the street, to have the city to have to clean it up and close it off. Because that's what happened to Arthur. No connectivity down there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, Lori?
I'm going to watch what I say, because I will be personally attacked with not an ability to defend myself. I'm sure that's your M.O. The, again, I've continually asked for the, sorry, the, there's a federal Wildlife Service determination to be done, because in two thousand and three, there was a determination that Lund Hill was in the, was in the one-point-eight miles from the breeding ground, and it would seem that that, and I, all I'm asking is for it to be checked out. It doesn't mean it's going to stop the development, it just means there would be more requirements. And all I get is negativity on that. And I just want you to follow the law. If it, the feds need to be involved, they need to be involved. And it, this whole thing with developments, we had nine new housing development, housing units in nine years, two thousand and six to two thousand and fifteen. Now, in the last year, we've had, I think, close to a hundred and fifty units proposed or in process or being built. Don't you think that says something about what's going on here? Because I think it says a lot. I think you, all this money, all this thing will come and go, and people like, you'll build it, build and then you'll leave, and you'll leave the problems, and that, and you'll be long gone, and people will be hurt, children will be hurt, people won't have places to park, things will be, it's, I just, I'm just really sad for what's happening to Cattati. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Yes, Eric?
Well, it's kind of amazing how things tend to spin from meeting to meeting. Things change somewhat dramatically. Certain people are on the dais voting, thinking that they have the right to not let connectivity through the entire circumstance, and suddenly, staff tells them, no, you don't have that option. So the options change, the plan changes. Years ago, Hunter's Ridge asked the city to put in speed bumps. This is long after the houses were built, long after the roads were in place, long after the development had been finished. It was probably ten years. And speed bumps tend to slow cars down. Most people don't really want to juice it over speed bumps. Stop signs, unfortunately, don't do much of anything, because all you need to do is stand on the corner of Charles Street. I would suggest maybe be out in the crosswalk, and you'll find that cars don't even tap the brake. They go right on through and do a right turn. Some go right on through Old Redwood Highway. I guess they just don't see it. They stop if a car in front of them stops, but otherwise, it's free play. And I think if you put in more stop signs on a road which is not particularly monitored or watched, people are going to zip right on through. So I would say that stop signs are a nice idea, but on Charles Street, on either end of the road, people do not stop. Speed bumps slow people down. I think speed bumps would make it so that if I lived on Lund Hill, I would continue going down and stay on a smooth road rather than going through a development and go over speed bumps. If I were coming down Old Redwood Highway going north, I would spin if I could easily make a left turn and cut right through, because it would save me time, but not if I'm going over fourteen speed bumps. So I think speed bumps might be something to really consider. In terms of the parking issues, you're going to have more cars, you're going to have more parking. Right now, there's a car on Feller Street that hasn't moved in over a month. There's a car on Lund Hill that hasn't moved in over a month. There, today, I was by, and there was a pickup truck and a trailer going the totally wrong direction on the wrong side of the road, and I'm sorry, policemen drove right on down the road and didn't see it. So this happens. And in all fairness, there is a car that's parked on the end of Dorfman that hasn't moved for over a month, and there's a car on Honor Place that hasn't moved for over a month. So it's both sides of the street. Connecting the roads isn't going to change that. I don't know when you all are going to make something change so that certain people aren't selectively abused and officer's discretion doesn't really handle everything. If somebody's breaking the law, they're breaking the law, and it should apply to everyone. Anyway, this seems to be something that you people are having tremendous amount of meetings for and not really resolving that much, and that's unfortunate.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else wishing to speak on this item?
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Waters, eight-four-one-six Honor Place. I've had the pleasure of addressing you before, and I would like to thank three of you on this council. John Delorso, you rock. Thank you for coming and knocking on our doors. I'm sorry I wasn't there to open it. Mark Landman, you walked that neighborhood. You eloquently addressed our concerns, and I want to thank you both for expressing that in the last meeting, because I know that you were listening. And so it's your feedback that causes me to, at least, no matter what the outcome, know that you two, I'm voting for again, okay? Susan Harvey, you have also, thank you, said that you've been out there, you've walked the streets, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I would like to address just several items. I'll kind of, just item number one. I previously requested no speed bumps within the existing Hunter's Ridge development. Doesn't look like we're getting that, although I did just hear a comment, and I wanted to reiterate that. I personally wouldn't want additional speed bumps in our neighborhood. It's hard on the cars. And my neighbor across the street, the Stewart's, also had expressed that to me, but again, that's hearsay at this point, but I wanted you to know. We do have some concerns about that. I am curious about the DRC and the planning commission's recommended design changes, because it does include a no-Dorfman connection to Feller. How that was not in line with the, the general plan? How was that not connectivity? Of course, they do have a whole open street that is just kind of right there. There's going to be an open plan. But we are talking about closing off a road that was originally planned. And so if we must have connectivity, I would like you to at least consider only one street that goes through. There would still be some connectivity in that case, but there would be less of it. I do like the idea of having the speed bump in the new development, because if people are coming downhill at Honor, and that's the one that goes through, and I will say that would be less, less havoc for the developer, since he has an issue with the houses that are already developed down there. I mean, we are understanding, okay? But to have less traffic going through is going to make a difference, and still, even though every possible road wouldn't be connected, there would be some connectivity, and hopefully that could keep all parties happy. The issue of parking was addressed, and I know that earlier, Vicky Parker had said that we can't, a city cannot anymore, due to the current law, actually mandate parking. I don't know exactly where that comes from, but one of the things that was said at that time was that Hunter's Ridge had two-car garages. And most of our homes are three-car garages, so I want to kind of put that out there. I don't know what's planned in this new development, but Hunter's Ridge are almost all three-car garages. The ones that you see when you're coming along Dorfman, so many of those are two-car garages, because they're the small one-story houses that were required to have the low-profile roofs for the existing neighbors, the Lombardies, in their lot, okay? So yeah, most of them are three-car garages, and so, yes, we still have parking issues in our neighborhood, because those are big houses, and people have teenagers who drive to school and get to where they get. So I agree with my neighbor Heidi Daly in that that opening at Dorfman is going to cause that additional parking.
Are you almost done?
I am, almost done. All right. Okay. And so having that Dorfman road closed off would address both safety and parking issues, and so thank you for hearing us.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Okay, then I will close public comment on that and bring it back to the council. Questions?
Do we want to hear from the applicants at this point, and then come up with some questions?
Would the applicants like to speak? Come on up, Neil.
There's some things that they could maybe address, too.
Uh-oh.
So, my presentation's relatively straightforward. We'd rather not build the two thousand and nine map, but we've obviously put in a lot of time and effort to come up with less impactful, less dense, simpler to build, more in line with the current neighborhood's map. We think it's a much, much better project. Staff thinks it's a better project. Staff's put a lot of time and effort in also. With respect to public comments, we would like to point out that the buildings along the top, the three versus one, that the McGinnis family have spoken to now in three meetings, have been dealt with in that the buildings are not two stories, they're one story, and they're eight feet lower, ten feet further away, with significantly more screening than the two thousand and nine map. We have proven to ourselves and to staff that people in those three buildings cannot see into the McGinnis family home. We're still wondering what else we could do, but we think we've done everything we could do. With respect to parking in the new development, the homes have two-car garages, the homes have driveways that people can park in besides the garages, and we're building new streets that add another hundred and seven parking spots. So once again, math, if you've got forty-seven homes and they have two cars, they can either park in their garage, or if their garage is a man cave, they can park in their driveway. Say again? I'm sorry, I missed it. And then, for overflow parking, for the families that have teenagers, I used to have teenagers, so we did at one point have three cars and a two-car garage. There is the opportunity to park in one of those hundred and seven new spaces that get built when we build out the roads. So we wanted to make sure you had that information. The other part is going to be dealt with. We're going to ask Dalene to speak to the traffic calming, but I did want to point out that we actually had somebody take a video of the stoplight at Redwood and Valparaiso, and then drive it with the video camera on, to determine when the light's red during the rush hours, can you actually see, oh my goodness, it's red, I should cut through, as if he could cut through, correct? You have to, generally, by the time you, if there's not at least four or five cars backed up there, you can't tell. You're past the neighborhood, the Hunter's Ridge neighborhood, you've passed those two streets, and, Vicky, help me, I'm going to screw this up. Clovier and?
Lasker.
Lasker. So economic theory would suggest you have to be able to see it to go for the cut through. Behavioral economics would suggest you have to do the math, and after you do it once or twice, you would do the math. Okay, now I've got these stop signs, I've got speed bumps, it's going to take me longer than when I would have to wait for the light. We then did the analysis to determine that during the rush hours, we're probably talking about five cars per hour in the rush hour, about ten cars for each rush hour, morning rush hours and afternoon rush hours. So we'll have Dalene speak to that. So we really think this is not a cut-through discussion. This is really a question of connectivity with respect to the two neighborhoods, the new neighborhood, obviously, being the one we're proposing. So I'm going to ask Dalene to come up and speak specifically to some of the traffic, because we know that's, that was the item, that that's the reason that we got pushed from March twenty-eighth to today. And I'm perfectly willing to answer any other questions. And once again, thank you very much.
You may need to come back, Neil, but.
That'd be fine.
Okay.
So I'll make this very brief, because I've already given a presentation in front of you, but as you know, we've looked at the connectivity, we've looked at how much more time it would take, and, you know, as you, you asked the question about whether that analysis included those additional stop signs and speed bump, and it did not. My gut and my thirty-some years of traffic engineering practice tell me that once or twice, somebody will go through the neighborhood, and they will quickly figure out that that's really not the way to go, that it's going to take them a whole lot longer, and it's not good for their cars. The people who live there don't like driving over the speed bumps. Why in the world would anybody who doesn't live there go through there and put up with speed bumps? So I just don't see that cut-through as going to be a problem, and in fact, I think if anything, the Hunter's Ridge people will see a reduction in traffic in their neighborhood, because they're going to go out through the other neighborhood. I think the traffic will be higher going the other way. It's just the more convenient route to the freeway for most destinations in this area. So I don't really have anything other than that. We did look at the volumes that might turn. There's only- There's only like 25 cars an hour turning left from Old Redwood Highway to Valparaiso. So those are the vehicles they're talking about maybe cutting through. I mean, first of all, there aren't very many of them. It would take a really high percentage of them to even make the five cars that he was saying might go through an hour. That volume just is not high enough to elicit this kind of a response. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have, or sit down if you don't.
Would you like a question?
Would you be the person to ask about a little more on parking by any chance as well?
I can give it a shot, but I think probably the staff is the best one, but...
Since I have you right here in the sightline.
Because you have me standing here, sure, I'll be answered.
Perfect. So I just wanted to, because I remember, I don't think we tossed this off flippantly. I think we actually had some assurances last time that the numbers worked out. As you would expect, when you're building something, you're not going to design a community where purposely overflow parking has to go into the other neighborhoods as, or at least I hope nobody does because that's just not going to work. But I'm seeing we have two-car garages. We have driveways that I assume can handle at least one, potentially two cars. Would that be correct? Okay, so there's four cars, and this is before we touch the 108?
107.
I knew my mayor would have it, 107 extra street parking. So I just want to clarify that because I think from a neighborhood perspective, I would be concerned. I would be very upset if I thought this was designed, that overflow parking would be coming into my neighborhood along with all the other natural concerns that happen within Phil Development. Am I assessing this right, that it looks unlikely that that will be a problem barring the biggest graduation party ever at somebody's house?
Yeah, there are going to be date, there are going to be those times when somebody throws a really big party and the traffic is all over the place, but it could just as easily be somebody from Hunter's Ridge throwing the big party and the traffic is using on these streets. But in general, the fact that you've got two driveway, two garage, and again, if it's a man cave, now we're bound to back to the two driveway, but you have two driveway and additionally more than two spaces on average per unit on the street. So there's more than enough, that it exceeds what your city code requires.
That's never a bad thing.
In terms of the amount of parking per unit. And unless the Hunter's Ridge folks want to use the parking, nobody else will park there other than the people who live there. So it's, the street parking is really meant for the people who live there.
Good. And one last question of ours, because the concern was brought, we do have a number of what we call granny units on the site, and parking is lesser than, but I notice they all seem to have small driveways leading to them. I'm not an engineer to read the map, but my assessment was it looked like you at least park a car, maybe two if you're lucky in there. Is that correct? What's the expectation with the space as design there for that concern? Is there, I guess what I'm asking, is there additional beyond what seems to be a good amount with the driveways, the garages and the street?
Dalene is correct that there, for every unit, there is a two-car garage, excuse me, and there is a standard driveway which is, which parks two more cars. And then every accessory dwelling unit has one parking space added to the lot.
Okay, good. That gives me a better picture, and I think that gives us a little more clarity what we're getting. Thank you both.
Oh, Dalene, wait, wait, since we're hitting on parking and your time, I am assuming that this C-10 map here that shows all the little cars on there, that it appears generally to me that it looks like every unit or every lot, it looks like has an extra, at least two spots out on the street of street parking, if this is representative of...
Typically, just given the width of the lot frontage and the amount that has to be taken out for driveways, it's about two cars.
Okay.
You know, obviously, if there's some skinnier lots, then they're probably not going to get quite two. Or if somebody is driving, you know, a massive Suburban or something, then maybe they won't get two.
Yeah.
But for passenger cars, typically it would be, those take about 20 to 24 feet.
Well, and I noticed too that on the, some of the sections where there is no housing or there are just side yards, like at the top of Jagel and around the corner down by Honor Place there, that there appears to be more parking because there aren't driveways or houses there. And it looks like that's also true on the Dorfman and Honor Place extension. There's a lot of extra parking in those two areas.
And that's part of what you get from the, if you had 47 lots times two, and in front of each would be 94, that's kind of how you get up to the 107 is those side yard spaces as well.
Okay.
So it does average out to more than two street parking spaces per unit, in addition to their two garage and two driveway.
Okay, thank you.
Question to be on landscaping very quickly, if I might?
Sure.
Because just responding to questions from the audience. The concern was brought up, and this is not an atypical one. Somebody plants trees, they're going to be landscaping, but obviously they're sometimes, in some cases, they're too small, they take forever to grow. We did go over this in some depth. I just want to clarify, for the areas where we had really strong problems in terms of the various sightlines, you are paying extra to buy bigger trees that will be ready to do this essentially when planted. And for the other areas, because we did catch, they come in, I believe, at eight feet, if I remember, six or eight feet the trees. Your arborist told us it was within a year, year and a half, under two years essentially, that they'll be at full height to be able to do the screening they need to do.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. I just want, because we did, we did discuss this in the arborist, and it is important, I agree, so I wanted to make sure they heard that, and just have you be able to confirm that for the neighbors.
Yes, we did. We, for the two homes that Lori highlighted in yellow, those get taller trees than the eight feet. The other homes had the eight feet, and yes, we have the landscape, one of the landscape people here, he can just go into the detail, but when we did this last time, the consensus was somewhere between 12 and 18 months.
Right. Yeah, that's what I wanted to hear. I was hoping it wasn't going to go longer than that.
That is correct.
And the last thing, in terms of who's going to take care of these, I believe that's the HOA would be responsible, right?
Well, there's, these are individual homes.
Or would these be the individual homeowners?
Individual homes, but the actual quote buffer area, they've, the staff has identified that the HOA would, in essence, keep an eye on that buffer area. But remember, the buffer area is part of the house. The house is going to have plants and trees, so anyone who puts in a watering system obviously is going to be watering the whole area. So we don't see that as an issue.
Good, thank you.
I want to tag on to those same questions. So the buffer area, it is assumed that the HOA will take care of that, or the individual lot that the house is on? I want to be real clear here.
So Neil's correct that the landscaping would be taken care of by the individual homeowners. However, the fact that it is a privacy buffer is embedded in the CCNRs for the subdivision so that the HOA is knowledgeable about the intent of the buffer and therefore the need to maintain the trees as privacy screening.
And Mayor, that's for the lots 1 through 17, the ones that go along the Hunter Ridge side?
Okay.
That's where the privacy buffer really matters.
Okay, and so then that adds to my next question, which was the one that was asked. What about the buffer on the houses along Lund Hill?
Well, I can't remember if 117 comes around the corner like that.
The buffer and the language that I just mentioned applies to the entire Lund Hill and Lasker, Knowles bounce.
So even those houses up, I think it's like lots 1 through 6?
That's right. So it's 1 through 6 along the top, and then 7 through 17 down the side.
Okay.
Yeah.
And am I correct that I heard you say that those trees on lots 1 through 6 will be eight-foot trees? Or will those be bigger trees?
All the, all the trees are eight-foot trees except for the two yellow items that were identified, which, if I remember right, bound Dorfman. Did I get that right? Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Ready?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did you have a question?
I do. I have a series of questions.
Do we need Neil?
Do we need Neil? We may need Neil, but not now.
Okay, all right. We'll see what we...
My first question's to our fire marshal, and I'd like to hear a little bit more in the letter that was, the item was called a speed cushion. So I'd like to hear a little bit more about that as opposed to a speed bump.
Historically, fire services isn't going to reject any speed bumps because it delays our response, our response times can get longer. But I talked to Andy Taylor, who's the fire marshal, and he said that he is approving the design, which is, it's not as radical of a speed bump. It still gets you to slow down a little bit, but it won't affect our response as much.
So my understanding is that the larger engines, your vehicles, will drive over those, but the tires are in the wells, so there would be no bump. But if it's a regular passenger vehicle, at least two tires are on those, is that...
That's what he told me, yes. And I personally have not seen this design, but that's what, he said he has approved it, so.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Can I keep going?
Sure. Then I can tick things off as...
Check them off your list. So I remember at the last public meeting that we had where we talked about this subdivision, my question and my reason for leaning in a direction, I know we weren't voting that night, was, you know, would this project work without Dorfman or and/or Honor going through? I just couldn't come up with the answer that no, this project would fail if those streets didn't go through. And that was my decision, that was several weeks back. There have been some new information that's come up, and if it, and it sounds like, you know, we have two options in front of us. One is to approve the 2009 plan and map or the 2017. Well, I mean, I'm just going to say that the 2009 map does not make any sense to me. That's an additional 15 or so lots, and still has all the road connections, if not even more. So that seems like a horrific option at this point in time. I think we've addressed clearly the issues that were brought up by the applicants last time, the three issues they were talking about, which was grading, solar, and the utility undergrounding. I think those are pretty straightforward at this point, and what our responses were at the last public meeting, so I'm not sure that we really need to address those at this point in time. I'm quickly trying to find all of my notes because they're scattered over way too many pages. So, you know, I'm thinking that there's been a number of changes to the plan. I mean, I think we heard from the neighbors at multiple meetings that, you know, this is a really nice subdivision, but privacy, huge issue, and vehicle traffic, a huge issue. And it seems like, you know, it's not a perfect world out there, but it seems like we've made a fair amount of progress in trying to address those two issues while at the same time allowing this, potentially allowing this subdivision to be approved and to move forward. And again, I do want to say that I think the subdivision is, I mean, everything looks great as far as the structures, the design, use of solar, all of those issues. I think that the number of stop signs and some slowing devices, whatever you want to call them, speed somethings, that will be in place, whatever is decided, I think is a bit exaggerated, but I think it also gets to the point of certainly, hopefully slowing vehicles down that may go through there. And, you know, I see myself walking through that subdivision but not driving through it. If there's going to be all these speed bumps and stop signs, I mean, what's the point? It'll be quicker to kind of walk through there, and that's going to be something, I know in our subdivision, I stated this at the previous meetings, you know, we were the first subdivision over there in the Bird section, and then other subdivisions were built around us, and we get that through traffic now. And I think it's a mad, and we don't have any, we don't have the number of stop signs this subdivision would have. And I really think it'll work. I think it's going to be a pain early on. There's definitely a pain to this because, you know, we still have that pain of cars driving through a little too fast, but every one of those people are people that live in there. And I will say that the bulk of them, my children not excluded from this statement, it's usually the younger generation, it's like, slow the heck down, or there's going to be a price to pay. And so I'm not asking people to be vigilantes out there, but I think in time, you'd be surprised what you can do just by glaring at people that drive a little too fast through your neighborhood. So the fact that, you know, state law is playing very heavy, and I guess I missed that at the previous meetings. And again, you know, for me, if it comes down to A or B, and, you know, 62 or four lots versus 47, I think the overall project and I think the character of the neighborhoods and the city would be a lot better off with something a little bit smaller in size, larger lots, fewer lots, that type of thing. So I do want to push that forward. I appreciate hearing from Rancho Doby. Again, you know, the one issue is that I couldn't settle with at the last meeting was, would this project still work if the streets didn't go through? I still believe that it could work, but there's new information now that says, yeah, but it's, you should have thought of that a long time ago. So, I mean, I appreciate the work that the developers have done. I appreciate hearing from, certainly from the public at a lot of different levels about this, but I know we've got our hands full here tonight, but I just wanted to kind of go on record that there's been a lot of changes made, and there's been concessions made kind of on both sides, and that's what negotiations are all about. You kind of get to a point where everybody can agree to, yeah, it's not the best plan, but I get it, and this can work. For now, that's what I had. I guess I don't have any more questions for Neil, I'm really sorry. I do have a statement, I will say. I counted 108 parking spaces on the street, not 107. So I'd like you to, I'd like you to adjust your number the next time you mention that, so, thanks.
Wendy?
I just wanted to make a quick comment that I really appreciate all of staff's work and also the project developers. I mean, we've been here the last two meetings until after midnight, and a lot of the debates and back and forth about the grading and the underground, and that was all 10:30, 11 o'clock at night. So I really appreciate that we were able to make a middle ground and sort of try to make this project the best that we can for the situation that's before us. So just wanted to let the neighbors know, we've been hard at work listening and trying to make whatever modifications we can. I think those are the only two meetings I can think of so far in my tenure that went after midnight. So anyway, we really have been working hard, even if, you know, other folks weren't around. We've been trying to burn the midnight oil for all of you to get this hashed out as well as we can. So thank you, everybody, for all of the hard work.
John?
I would concur with Councilmember Lawson. I think it is a much better project, I, product, project. I don't really like the, there's a couple of comments made on there that, to me, just screamed of nimbyism. We're not going to be friendly with our neighbors, we're not going to like them, we're not going to be part of that whole arena. And that just kills me because we've all lived in a place, or maybe we haven't, but many places that we do live in are going to be subject to growth and development, and those are subject to California state laws, that we have to allow some of these things to come in, much like the general plan. Who knows who's going to be running for council in two years? I'm glad that John and Mark and Susan have an endorsement, but when I think of some of those comments that come in, it's really disturbing because we have, as a body, as a governing body, have to consider 7,400 other people that live in a community and that we've developed this general plan for over multiple years. It's not just one particular neighborhood. I think the project in 2017 is significantly better than 29. I don't like the thought of a hammer being used to say, well, hell, we can go back to 29 and then we use that project. I mean, I just, I don't really like that intimidation tactic. And if it wasn't meant that way, then it's much better, but it certainly felt that way. But I do think that we've made some concessions. We've requested that we allow for a little height variance. I think it'll be great. We're looking at less grading for that. I think the compromise on the solar was good. I would have preferred to go 50%, but I'm willing to compromise and negotiate on that. And I do think that when you have to look at the whole projects and the general plan and everybody in the community, this is something that's probably going to fit.
I'd like to thank my friend and colleague for softening the crowd up for me.
Yeah, I do what I can. Yeah, I do what I can.
Yeah. I think I'll start with a quick mea culpa, along with my colleague, Mr. Delawso. I tended to think we had, I believed, and I think there was some lack of clarity, but it appeared there might be a path to reducing the connectivity, perhaps totally getting rid of it for this particular project. And after a lot of thought, I tended to agree with the same thinking as my friend, John, that in this particular case, although usually this connectivity is valuable, it's common sense, that's why it's in the general plan, for this particular place, I wasn't sure if the value was as strong. However, that doesn't seem to be an option that's available to me. Somebody asked, why can we just have no through traffic? Well, first of all, if you look at the general plan amendments that would have to be done or the fact of the general plan, you look at the fire district recommendation, those are tough things to get over. Even if we can get past them, which we could, and if I thought there was a good outcome, I might be trying to discuss that and see if we could arrive at something. You then arrive here looking at redesign, time, and a general plan amendment, this is going to add quite a bit to the cost of, and this is perhaps the part where I was a little naive, I thought the additional space might be valuable to the applicant, but actually the time is going to be such that we're going to increase his costs. And then we will increase them to a point where the specter of that 2009 plan becomes perhaps more financially attractive to him. Not so much as a threat, just as the permissions are there. This is better for the community, what we have right now in 2017, and it's more efficient for the builder to build, too. But if I run that cost up, and where that number is is unknown to me, but if I get close to that, then all of a sudden, we might have a situation where we do have that 2009 plan built. A lot more traffic, a lot more buildings, really in so many ways, not as nice as what Guy and Neil and everybody have put together. This is really a nice-looking plan, and I made that note several times, and unfortunately, with the discussion with Delawso, this is going to be a good-looking neighborhood. I'm very pleased to see that. But with that, it just strikes me that there's not a road to get there. You asked us for two things. You said, either close all this traffic down or give us every single traffic mitigation thing you can think of. I wish I could have got you the former, but that was unrealistic, perhaps. We can give you the latter, and as you asked, it's the bumps, the table, the whatever we're currently calling this new iteration of speed reduction table. It's not in your neighborhood, it's in the other neighborhood. Although, these choices were made basically, I believe, just on the traffic assessment. What would do most to get what you asked for, which was making sure that traffic would be slowed, that you would not be in a traffic target for cut-through? That seemed to be the most important thing I heard, and I think staff from both, both the city as well as the developer, worked hard to get that. So I guess it goes back to what I said the first time I saw this, you know, we'll get to a point where nobody's completely happy, nobody got everything they wanted, but perhaps eventually we'll look at that as success, and maybe that's it. My leverage is a little limited tonight with the situation of having two potential plans here, but I think the outcome will be okay. It's not everything all of us wanted, but I think it will be good. I think it will, and I think we've carved as much of value out for everybody. And again, that's why we took all these meetings. Granted, it seems like we weren't getting to a resolution, but I think the time was worth it to make sure we heard everybody's concerns, looked at this, too. Sorry, Neil, even maybe three times, but to get to that, so we did that, because we owe that much to the community. So thank everybody for coming and making these points to us, and thank all the staff for double duty on this one, triple duty.
Mayor Harvey, if I could add one more thing, I did want to reference. I do think that the traffic, stop signs, and that many speed bumps in that particular area is overkill, and I think down the road, they're going to regret it. But that's just my opinion on that. As John said, I think that they're exaggerated.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a couple of things that I don't think were addressed. So the no speed bumps in Hunter's Ridge, we don't have any plan there. I think that at some point in time, depending upon what happens with stop signs or doesn't happen with stop signs, you know, there may become a time where one of those calming devices, as was pointed out, may make more sense in the future, say on Dorfman, if that ends up, you know, getting faster. So right now, there isn't any plan as I saw on the plans, but that may come back. I want to hit on the, and I know we addressed this the last time, but I guess I would like, I think it's Neil, to address it again, the wildlife, the federal thing, you addressed that last time, but I believe that Lori had to leave early, and so she didn't get to hear your comments on that, because I know that you did address that, but if you do it again.
Yes, we did. So the entire package of environmental requirements has been reviewed by Olivia, who's sitting over there from the M group, in conjunction with our consultant in the area, Monk Associates, and our environmental lawyer, David Ivesta. And with that said, I believe we have met or exceeded all of the federal and state requirements. We have done the CTS studies, we have done the wetland studies, we have mapped the wetlands, we have proven there are no CTA, California tiger salamander in the area. We have, in mapping the wetlands, brought the Federal Army Corps of Engineers out there. We have received a letter from them that basically states, yes, that your mitigation, which is actually sort of brilliant design by a combination of Dave Brown and Guy Chambers of how to put the sidewalk in, meets the test. And we have spent about $400,000 or $500,000 on that, and we are convinced that we have gotten over that hurdle.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So that addresses that. I would like to ask a couple of questions with regards to HOA responsibilities and what they can do and can't do. So let's just, for kicksake, say that there becomes a parking problem out there. What, if anything, or not, can an HOA do about parking? Do they have any responsibilities? Yes, no?
These are all public streets, so they would be subject to citation by the police department, just like all of our other public streets, so they would not be managed in that respect by the HOA.
So there wouldn't be an instance where everybody was filling up the streets and not using their garages and not using their driveways, that any kind of permit parking or anything like that, so that there wasn't enough parking? We wouldn't ever get to that?
No.
Okay.
No, not in this scenario. I mean, there's no reason to believe that the folks who will inhabit these units in the future would be any different than the average homeowner, so I'm assuming that some people probably will not use their garage, but to no greater extent than exists in our older neighborhoods.
Okay, because we have seen problems with some of that in some areas. Then the other item that is still concerning me, I brought it up on March 28th, and I brought it up again in April, is the whole thing around the issue of kids playing. I really am look, you know, I look at Condition 4, and it just talks about a future park, a future pocket park. Since that lot is part of the HOA, I believe, that would really put the onus on the HOA to provide for any play equipment or anything like that. Is that correct?
That's correct. The property is going to be privately owned and maintained by the HOA with a public access easement over it.
So my concern still exists that we are not providing a park for, or any kind of play equipment or anything for children within the area. I am still concerned with that, and, you know, I brought it up twice before, and I'll bring it up again, but I think that we, it's obvious that we had Hunter's Ridge, they don't have a place to play, and people are saying they're playing in the streets. Well, not a good idea, but if we don't provide places for them to play, I think that that is bad on our part. So I really would like us to consider putting in a little bit more than just the fence around the house in that park area, but I guess that's something that we have to decide on. I, like my colleagues, would like to thank the public for all their comment. I can't believe, you know, the attendance that we've had and the comments that we've had. They, for the most part, have been very thoughtful. I appreciate that they have tried to work with us on different suggestions. I appreciate all the staff work that has gone into it and all the multiple iterations that the developer has done, and your patience with us as we step through this and try and make it be the best project that we can have for the area. It's interesting, as was pointed out, you know, we kind of are at a spot where we have our general plan, which is our long-term vision, is what, that we have to look at. Our general plans get updated about every 10 years, 15 years, and there's a lot of public input during that time. I mean, all the sections, there's a lot of Post-it notes, a lot of ideas, you know, it's a very thoughtful process, a very painful and long process, but what that does for us is really lets the community know about we, as a community, what do we want 10 or 20 years from now, our community to look like? And sometimes those goals change, sometimes what we want changes, but that's really allows us to, as different development, come to us, that we're not looking at a specific developer or a specific project, we can match what is being brought forward to us and match it against what the goals are. And I think that's an important, an important aspect that I think somehow got glossed over, and maybe that's kind of where we got, you know, a little sidetracked here. But that vision for our community is important. As was pointed out, we have in the circulation, we have the linkages, and that's in there, and we have to abide by that. And as Vicky pointed out, the 1988 subdivision map, you know, was quite clear that those streets were going to go in there. I guess we, you know, could have looked at that a little bit, you know, earlier, kind of pointed that out, but as was pointed out in hindsight, you know, we learned more information. I want people to know that we listen. I want people to know that it is important that they get involved. All around where I live, housing developments have happened. When I originally moved here, there wasn't anything around me, but little bit by little bit, infill, as Vicky pointed out, has happened. And it's really is important for people to get involved, to make sure that the changes, when things happen, that the changes for the future, that you mold that. And I'll give you a couple of examples of that. One is that hillside development. It so happened that, we didn't used to have that, but I sort of got involved in that when they started building three-story houses behind me. How could this happen? And lo and behold, I came to find out that we didn't have hillside development requirements. So those are the kinds of things that you kind of go, okay, well, it happened to me, but what can we do for the future? And that's where you get involved in change of that. The same thing, but a little bit different, when down the street, there was a development that happened, and they had below-market rate units. And guess what? The person that sold the property bought the below-market rate units and rented them out. And so now we have, you know, aspects where their deed restricted, so that those kind of things don't happen again. But you, you know, you learn. It's just like, well, how could that happen? You know, but, so it is important for people to get involved, and as you learn and you see things that you don't like in your community or you wish were different, you have to get involved and work to change those things. So my learning from this is that if you are in an area and you think there might be another street, what do we do to let people know for sure that that's going to happen, so it's not a surprise? Because obviously, it was a surprise. An example that was given was signage that's over on Gilman Ranch Road, that that makes it quite clear to those folks that that street will, at some point in time, you know, go through. So it's sort of like looking to the future and what can you do to help mold and change things? So those are my comments, and I don't know what you guys want to do at this point.
May I ask a process question, Staff?
Yes.
Thank you. If I could, I wanted to clarify something. So a few of you have apologized for not knowing circumstances before, and I just want to make it clear to everyone that that was not the council's fault. That was because we, at a staff level, took very seriously what the neighbors were complaining about or had concerns about, as did the applicant. So we pointed out the general plan policies that guided us, but what we did after we heard those concerns was we went back and looked at the sum total of the general plan and said, is there anything in this that would guide us down a different path? Would we, if this project came in today and we had our general plan here, would we make a different decision? So that was not because you didn't hear us say that, that was because we went back and did that extra research and pulled the 88, the 1988 map. So I just want to make that clear, that that wasn't an oversight on the council. That was because we stepped back and took a renewed look at the general plan in this project. So just, I wanted to comment on staff's thought behind the park. Because we've consistently heard and we know about the need for park facilities on the west side, we were focused more on the, near the proximity of Putnam Park and the fact that these folks will pay somewhere in the range of $15,000 per unit in park-in-loo fees. And so we were focused more not on providing park space within this development, but with taking those park-in-loo fees and applying them toward a master plan of park locations and facilities citywide. So it wasn't that that was an oversight on our part, it's that we thought the cash in hand would open up different possibilities for us citywide. So I just wanted to make this clarification.
So I had a clarification before any kind of motion is made. You mentioned something, Vicky, about one additional condition on the BMR units, and I didn't know if it was specifically stated, I missed it, so I'd like to hear what that is. And does that need to be a part of the motion, or is that something that we would just, in a broad way, include an additional condition?
It would need to be in your motion to add it, and we have draft language if you would like to hear it.
Yes, I would.
Okay. Prior to final design review, the architectural plans must be revised to show consistent architecture for the duplex units, the BMR units, and enhance the street-side facades to provide more articulation. Further, comma, the extent of side yard fencing along those facades shall be reduced and the landscaping increased. So it was fairly general direction that we got from DRC. So we were going to leave some of that to the creativity of the consultants, but have it verified through final design review.
So in a motion, would it be okay to say, including, what's the word I'm looking for, a condition number 157? I just wanted to throw that number out there. I thought you guys would enjoy that number. Is that reasonable, or?
Yes.
I don't think anybody's going to want to recite what you just said.
Yes, that would be perfectly reasonable, yes.
Okay. And the city attorney is going to nod with something like, perfect? Okay, good. Thank you.
Vicky, can you tell me what that amount is again, per lot? I'm sorry.
It fluctuates depending on the fair market value of the property.
Oh.
So it's not a set fee, but for So it's not a set fee, but for most of the developments that are occurring right now, with those current land prices, it's in that $15,000 per unit range.
And one last procedural question.
Go ahead.
Is a motion, can we take this all as one motion? Because we have a lot of separate things here. Is that the intent?
If I may, counsel, legally, you should adopt the sequel resolution. I would move to approve an addendum. You pointed to it. Okay, sorry.
Oh, yeah, 118. In the gray box.
I know, but you pointed at 61. I'm just, it's all right.
I have to take a joke, and I could read it.
Okay, you go.
Well, no, I think, you know.
No, you go.
You've got the momentum. Want you to?
Fine.
Go for it.
I would make a motion that we approve the legislative map amendment for 100 Valparaiso Avenue to reduce the number of lots from 62 with 10 inclusionary units to 47 with 7 inclusionary units on 9.6 acres, together with preliminary design review, a hillside development permit, and a minor variance for a maximum two-foot height increase on selected lots. I'll second that. Thank you.
With condition? With additional condition 157.
With the condition of 157.
Still second, ma'am.
Still second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't hear any. That would be a 5-0 vote. And with that, could we take a five-minute stretch break, bio break, please?
I may have to do here. Just have the, um, keep eating.
Madam Mayor, given the time of the evening tonight and the amount of items still on your agenda, I would ask the city council to adjourn this meeting to a time and place certain in the future to take up these items. Going after 10 o'clock, given the intensity of the meeting thus far tonight, I think is a bit abusive to the public and so forth. The council has complained that, tonight already, that some of these meetings have gone up till midnight. There's no reason for this. You can easily adjourn this meeting till next Tuesday night at 7:00. This is very appropriate and very commonly done in a lot of different cities for city council members and members of the audience who have to get up in the morning and go to work. So I would ask you, please, in the interest of the public and of the city council and staff, to adjourn this meeting to a time certain and place certain in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, Lori?
I would also like to support having this meeting adjourned. As a person with a disability, having a three-hour meeting is about as much as I can tolerate. And I would like to participate in the rest of the meeting, but I cannot go to 12:00 with my disabilities as they are. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this? Seeing none, I will close public comment on this. So, yes?
In light of the public comments regarding length of the meeting, the consistent comment that we never work past 8:30, and we can get out of here early, and we never have enough work to do, and et cetera, et cetera, I would make a motion that we extend the meeting past 10:00 on these remaining few items.
I would be in support of that as well, since we've done it in the last two out of the three meetings. So we have a motion. Do we have a second? A second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, let's get this done. Consideration of city donation to Project Graduation. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, just a brief one. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. So, as I know, the council is all well, very well aware. Project Graduation has been around for the past 24 years for all of the graduating seniors within, well, from Rancho Cattati to Takai, El Camino, Phoenix, and Credo High Schools, so every high school within the district. And the event this year will be held on June 2, 2017. And one of the hallmarks of this event is that, in the past 24 years since the event began, not a single graduating senior has died from alcohol, drug, or traffic accidents on graduation night in Sonoma County. So it's a huge success that benefits the children of Cattati and Rona Park. Project Graduation is a nonprofit, tax-exempt organization, and it does not receive any funding from the school district. And also, I think, as everyone in this room is aware, there was a widely publicized embezzlement of funds from Project Graduation, which resulted in a depleted, I think completely depleted fund amount only a couple months before the graduation, Project Graduation event was to be held. So in response to this, there's been a lot of community outpouring to assist, to ensure that the event goes on this year. There's a GoFundMe page that the Project Graduation organization is hosting. There's also a pancake breakfast planned on May 13 in Rona Park. The Rona Park Foundation is, or has considered, and actually don't know the outcome of the vote, a contribution of $5,000 to Project Graduation. And in discussions with the president, following the theft of funds, there's been many significant new measures put into place to prevent that from happening in the future, which is in the staff report. And lastly, I'll just add that the city council does have a contributions account of $25,000. There's up to $5,000 remaining in that account that could be utilized as a donation if the council so wished, as a one-time donation this year. And there's an attached resolution making the findings, if the council wishes to do that, at whatever amount they wish to, up to $5,000. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Yes?
Just want to confirm, I believe it's on page 229, but the expectation, the request is for a one-time contribution. This is not planned or suggested as an ongoing continuing support?
At this point, it wasn't suggested. It was an extraordinary event that befell the organization, so it was a one-time donation.
Very good. Thank you.
And if I could just make a quick comment, I looked online to see where they are as far as their GoFundMe page, and they're up to about $12,000. So, but my understanding for Mr. Delosso is that's probably only about half of what they would need to put on the event.
Yeah, just typically, for the six years that I was president, we typically spent $35,000 to $40,000 on this annual one-night event. A lot of things were donated, but, and there was fundraising events, but the fact that it's been depleted, you know, with $12,000 plus another five from the Rona Park Foundation, and if this council was to go five more, that's $22,000. That'll go a long, long way in pulling off this one-night event. It takes thousands of hours and volunteers to put this event together, so, and every high school does different things. Sorry, I hit my button. But, yeah, that would, it would go a long way, for sure, this money, the total sum so far.
The Act of 2030, Club of Rona Park Cattati, is considering a donation of $10,000 as well.
That would be great. And again, you know, there's some of that money, if it carries over, is seed money for the next year. That's all the more benefit.
Any more comments? All right, I'll open this up for public comment. Yes, Lori?
I do agree that the $5,000 should go to the Project Rad. I do have issues with it being with the city, sorry, I'm very tired, the city's contribution I have sent, I do know what I'm talking about with this. I have a graduate certificate in nonprofit administration. The Chamber of Commerce cannot accept donations. It has to come, there are 501(c)(6), not a 3. They can, you can get contract with them to do the visitor service, visitor center, but you cannot contribute to them. You've depleted this fund for every year, every cent has gone to it, when it should be just a plain contract for city services. Then this fund could be used for other worthwhile, worthwhile projects and things like that to put it as every, because every cent, other than this year, has, because it started in 2014, has gone to the Chamber of Commerce, and that's wrong. I mean, this is the first, I believe, donation that is not the Chamber of Commerce. That's not a direct donation. That needs to be corrected. It needs to be legal, and it needs to be, and also, the Chamber of Commerce has filed the wrong forms for the last three years, and they need to amend them so that they have, they filed under $50,000 in their dues, and charitable events had $70,000 to $80,000 in the previous three years, and they did not qualify to file that short form with, has no information. They need to be more transparent, and, but they can be city-funded. You guys just have to do it right. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. George?
There was a crime that was committed, an embezzlement. Therefore, the district attorney is responsible for pursuing jail time, rehabilitation, and restitution. So if you're going to donate $5,000 to this event, you should have a condition on this motion that says that a letter should be drafted to the district attorney, asking her to demand restitution from the guilty parties here, and if restitution is obtained, that that money come back to the city. Just to throw it out there, without that condition is really, really short-sighted. We want that money back. We want that, these guilty parties to pay that money back, and we don't want it going someplace else. We want it coming back to Cattati for other projects. So please make it a condition of your motion to seek restitution so we can get our funds back.
Most assuredly, this is a worthy cause, and it's an unfortunate circumstance that they find themselves the way they do. That said, there are a number of worthy causes. There's suicide prevention, there's drug prevention, all kinds of things that young people can get. I unfortunately lost one of my former students this week because he was having a good time driving his truck, and luckily, nobody else lost their life. That being said, I would suggest strongly that you do what other cities have done. There are police agencies in Rona Park that had a breakfast and fundraisers. I certainly would think that you could do similar type of things. There is, believe it or not, a few weeks remaining, and you certainly have the wherewithal to make something happen if you choose to. I would suggest, as you oftentimes do, see what your neighboring cities are doing and follow their lead. If they're donating thousands of dollars, well, then you should probably do so, and again, as other people have said, with certain caveats, because otherwise, people are always going to fall into hard times. Somebody's always going to have their hand out. There's always plenty of worthy causes. I don't often say you should do what other people are doing, but oftentimes, you do tend to follow the lead of surrounding leaders in other cities. So you might do what Rona Park's doing. You might talk to the school district and see if there's anything other than just a cash payout that would help. Mr. Delosso talks about volunteering. Certainly, all of you could volunteer. All of you could do other things, as could we all. But I would suggest that you don't get in the business of writing a check and calling it goodwill. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back.
Let's do this so people can hear. I would agree, we certainly want the value to come back to the city, but it does strike me, when I look at this, this really, it's the greater area. It also includes Rona Park, but it does really come back to the community and one of the best aspects, which is the kids. I do take, agree with the concern about making sure a lot of people don't come out to us looking for money that perhaps we can't share, that the handout, as I believe Mr. Kirchman said. But since with the bona fides, this is a one-time request, giving some rather extraordinary, and I certainly hope never to be repeated, situations and circumstances, it benefits the whole community. It's a one-time thing. I would support and make a motion that we donate 5K out of our contribution fund.
I would like to make a comment.
Okay.
I did suggest to the city manager that I could head up a barbecue in the park and raise money to support this organization, in light of the fact that through no fault of the children, there was an issue that came up regarding theft and impropriety. Unfortunately, I've had a sister that had an aneurysm, is in an ICU on intensive care, so I didn't want to head a project and take on that task and then have to leave if I had to go back east for extended time or a funeral arrangement. So the thought was presented to the city manager, and we talked about that, and then a couple of days later, when that incident occurred, I had to withdraw as offering up my services, because, as many of you know, we have barbecued quite a few things before and been successful in raising funds for various organizations. So with that in mind, I would second Commissioner Councilman Vice Mayor Hammond's motion.
Any other comments? No, thank you. No?
I have a question, and it's probably for the attorney. Since this organization has really nothing to do with any of the criminal charges that went on, there wouldn't really be anything that we could put on this particular organization that...
I agree. I don't know where the criminal action lies in this matter. I don't know whether there will be any restitution that will be recovered. From my very general knowledge of criminal law, when there is restitution, it is generally payable to the identified victim of the crime, which I think in this instance, probably is going to be the school. So I think you certainly could, you know, when speaking with your school representatives indicate that in the event that they're fortunate... representatives indicate that in the event that they're fortunate enough to get restitution, which I, I have no idea whether they will get any, um, it would, you would like to see the donors acknowledged in some way, if, if that can be done. Um, it could be in the form of a request. Legally, I don't believe you have to do that, but you could certainly make that, um, overture in the event that there is restitution that comes back.
I'd be willing to amend my motion to include just a simple request, in that rather, I think the chance of that happening is pretty slim too, but who knows, it's a prudent thing to do.
Well, and can I tag on here, not to drag it out too long, but, um, as far as restitution, it's usually included as part of a term of probation, so, um, that it be paid back to the named victims, um, and in many cases, it is dragged out over many years, being made payments through either the DA's office or probation, it's not gonna come in as a lump sum. And personally, I know you've just amended your motion, but I'd much rather just give it as a one-time gift and, and hope that it never happens again, and let it go from there, but I, I'd rather not condition it on, hey, if you get the money back, could we recoup it, I'd rather than be able to put that money forward to other future project grads, and other school activities.
And, and the project grad, uh, organization's not an official, um, arm of the education of the Roner Park, Katari Roner Park Unified School District, so it's a separate organization outside of the school.
Right. Motion. Thank you.
So, we had a, okay, so we had a motion, there was a second, but then he amended, and there was not a second on that, so...
And, and I didn't ask for a strong condition, I just merely, I believe, as, uh, our council suggested, just a verbal or slide-written request, that in the case of, unlikely case of restitution, um, we would be amenable to having that amount paid back, other than that, we're happy to support. And if the council doesn't like that, uh...
I'm happy to second vote either way. No, I think that's, that's perfectly fine.
So, we have a motion, and a second, and, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On the amended motion?
On the amended motion?
Nay.
No?
And I am abstaining.
You are abstaining, okay, so, we have three yeses, one no, and one abstain, so, there you go. Okay, so, onward. The Katari Train Depot lease agreement with Smart?
Yes, so, thank you.
Is that you too?
That's me too.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, uh, as everyone's well aware, the city owns a Train Depot building at the Katari Smart train stop, and, um, in the middle of two thousand sixteen, the city began discussing with representatives of Smart, the potential for the use of the Train Depot as a service center for Sonoma County. In October nineteenth, two thousand sixteen, the Smart Board of Directors authorized the general manager to, um, to move forward, um, on a couple different service agreements, one of them being with, um, Golden Gate Transit, who operates a phone bank, uh, system to serve their existing customers, and they had the capacity to add Smart's, um, customer's calls. So, um, they also have a walk-up location, but this is in central Santa Rosa, so it's at the southern extremity of the, of the, um, operating area for Smart. So Smart was looking for some other alternatives, particularly in the northern part of the initial operating segment in Sonoma County, and, um, they, uh, they had, they had some limited, um, options, both with Santa Rosa City Bus and Sonoma County Transit, to sell Clipper cards, which are those cards that you can use in any transit system in the Bay Area, which Smart will be using, as well as the buses up here use. And, um, but it didn't, it didn't deal with a lot of the, the walk-up customer need in Sonoma County, and so that drove Smart's interest, and, um, and it seemed like a very compatible use for the Train Depot building for us, and, and I will just basically, uh, tell you, without getting into the, I mean, a lot of the details are in the staff report, but, but, as you will recall from being there, there's three office spaces inside the building, and so they would be the, um, sole occupiers of those three office spaces. They would have access to the lobby area, they'd have access to the janitorial closet, um, and they would have the first right to program events, um, with advance notice in the lobby and/or exterior plaza areas, special events. The city would still retain the ability to program events, or rent the facility in the lobby area and/or the pla, in the plaza. We'd have exclusive access to the phone cabinets, the mechanical room, the clock, um, kiosks and clock tower. We could potentially lease out some of the spaces in the clock tower kiosks. Um, the clock tower structure itself has those, uh, purple inset areas, which were originally intended to be ticket vending areas, but, um, ultimately, with the design that Smart went with, they're not needed for ticket vending, they're gonna do a lot of the ticket vending inside the building, um, so specialty ticket, ticket vending, this is vending for, um, veterans or, um, seniors. It doesn't, it's not issued through a standard ticket vending machine, it's a, it's something like the, um, it's, I, I haven't seen one, but it was described to me as kinda like, uh, um, the name's escaping me, but, uh, you know, the German, uh, you know, Cryptology machine that they took, that the Allies tried to break?
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, anyway.
Enigma.
Enigma, yeah, it's like one of those kinda things, they turn a handle, and like a card pops out of it, and it's good for a pass, I guess, so, um, they can't just leave that on the, on the platform of the, of the train stations, but they have the regular vending machine on the platform itself. So, um, they're also thinking lost and found, and just general, like I said, customer walk-up. So, um, tho, those are the, those are the lease areas that they would be, they would have exclusive use over, and then the shared use areas, and then the exclusive use areas for the city. Um, I was gonna say that, you know, we, we could potentially look for, um, other compatible uses in the kiosk. One that stood out was maybe like an ATM machine, or, you know, something that, some that a commuter or traveler might, you know, wanna use, or maybe some sort of vending machine, I don't, you know, I don't know. So, there's, there's potential options there that we'll explore next, um, as well as leasing the plaza, and we've also, um, already talked to the Historical Society about some more permanent displays within the lobby area, and, um, they seem excited about that op, opportunity too, so, those are some other things in the, um, in the future there, at the Train Depot. And, um, oh, last but not least, so, the lease would be, um, twenty thousand dollars a year, for five years, it's, it's four terms, and in each one of the four terms, we can change the lease amount. There's, there's no CPI escalator in the five-year term, um, but each five-year renewal, we can change the lease at that time. Um, and I think, the only thing else I'll add is that the, um, some of the existing utilities that are there now, would be, continue to be maintained by the city, just so we maintain control of that, and we don't have to worry about who's paying for it, or who's not paying for it. Smart's usually a pretty good tenant, but, you know, anyway. With that, I'd be, I'll just stop talking and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, here we go.
Okay, thank you. So, that was the one point I was trying to, I'm just testing you tonight.
Yes, you are.
I, and it's working great, um, about those out years, and if there's some unintended cost or consequence we're not picturing right now, um, and so that gives us that flexibility, which is what I was really looking for in here, so, I appreciate that. But I think, I, I guess if twelve thousand is the working amount of what we're currently paying annually, um, you know, there's a little bit of a buffer in there for at least year one, and, again, it can escalate if it needs to, so that's fine. I like it.
Yeah, I mean, the, right now, the way I, the way I look at it right now, that we're paying for it, well, it's, it's not occupied, and when buildings aren't occupied, you know, maintenance becomes more of an issue, and, um, and all those costs are being paid out of the general fund now, and, you know, after it's leased, they no longer will be, so it'll be a kind of, you know, barring a major repair of some type.
Is there, is there, when, when I see security slash fire alarms, I mean, are you talking cameras that are there at this point?
Correct.
Okay, so, I mean, fire alarms are great, I get that, but when I see security, I like something a little bit more, um, so, you know, there, now there's eyes on the place twenty-four seven, that's better.
Yeah, right, it's, the security is the physical cameras, as well as the, the alarms, like the intrusion alarms, and then the fire is a monitored fire system.
Is that all?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, Smear, would you?
One quick question, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, initial lease amount of twenty K, quick question, I know that obviously office space has been moribund for years around here, but I understand, although the projection was originally, we heard, for a decade or so, that office space is beginning to heat up a little, at least in Santa Rosa. What sort of comparables did we have, are we pretty confident this is a reasonably fair price, uh, in terms of leasing this space for them? Obviously, I don't wanna chase away a good government tenant that can be there for years, that's a very good thing, there's value in that, but, uh, do we have any guidance on where that number is? Because it struck me at first glance, I wondered if it was a little low?
So, we looked at the, um, right, I shouldn't use the royal we, I looked at the, the, uh, lease rates for some other office space here in Katari, and, um, you know, lease rates can go, they're all over the board, depending on what is included in the lease, you know, some are just the space itself, and, and the, and the tenant pays all the utilities, and some are, you know, and, and so those, those tend to be, um, well, they tend to be all over the board, right, and then others are full, fully inclusive leases, which is what this would be proposed to do, with the caveat that, if they wanted to increase the level of service of anything, they're paying for it out of their own pocket. Um, but, in terms of the lease rate, it, it is, it's within the, it's within the market, it's on the low end of the market, um, to be honest, but, the, the thinking there is that it gets them established, and gets them, it gets the building occupied, and gets them established as a use here, and, so, in subsequent five-year terms, um, it'll be an established use, and hopefully, you know, as the market rises, you know, each five-year increment, we can...
I, I think that's prudent, I can support that, the only, the only thing I might add to that is when we come to our next five years, and we're assessing escalation, well, obviously, you're gonna take a look at what prices are going around here, but I would also take a look at the neat, particular needs of Smart, and how many sites are there like that, because I believe we might be somewhat unique in having that, and that might be just a very small, very slight additional escalator, it would be perhaps fair, once they find this works out for them in five years, to add into that cost. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
No, I, no, I think it's a great use of the space there, it frees up, uh, employee time for us as a city, trying to maintain that, and worried about that, and, um, it's obviously a, um, shining example of Katari for the whole Smart route, so...
Wendy, did you have any questions?
Nice job, Damian.
Um, can you talk to me a little bit more about the utilities? I guess the ones that strike me are cable, telephone, and electricity, so, right now, no one's in there, so no one's running up a telephone bill, um, I don't know that the cable, I guess you can get a standard, you know, flat rate per month, and it sounds like if they want something more than that. Electricity and gas, that, you know, could kinda go up and down, so what...
Yeah, I...
What if that goes crazy? I mean, that, that's the only thing I'm concerned about, it is that, you know, oh gee, look, let's call, you know, let's call international, let's call, you know, oh, who cares?
So, um, I, I should clarify that the, um, the ones, so when, when a tenant moves in, the ones we'd be talking about mostly, that could escalate, would be electricity and gas.
Mm-hmm.
Um, gas just running the furnace more.
Right.
Right? Um, electricity, it has solar, which largely offsets the use.
Okay.
So I don't, I mean, it's not that subject to fluctuation.
Okay.
Um, the other ones, so the cable, the cable is, is a dedicated cable for streaming back the security video.
Okay.
And it's not something that they would even have access to.
Okay, so it's not, not cable-like.
Right, it's not like...
Thanks.
Yeah, it's not like HBO or something, yeah, pay-per-view and watch the fight on our dime.
Or hot noses, otherwise we might have just lost the lease.
Right, and, and the telephone is for the monitored, you know, um, alarm system and fire alarm system, so again, it's not a, it's not a telephone system for the tenant, it's a...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's helpful, because, you know, when you think about those in, you know, sort of regular office terms, you, you have to think about what those costs are, so that's helpful, thank you.
Yeah, and I, well, actually, I'll also add that, you know, Smart has widely advertised their, their fiber trunk in their, that they've installed along their rail line, you know, their gigabit, or whatever they're calling the thing, um, so, um, you know, we're talking to them about, can we hop onto that?
Mm-hmm.
So, hopefully, we can get some, you know, mutual benefit there too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, I will open this up for public comment, any public, uh, anyone wishing to comment?
Come on, guys, you wanna say something?
Nope, no comment, all right, I will close public comment.
I move to adopt a motion authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement with Smart for use of the Katari Train Depot building as a customer service center.
My second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let that be a five oh vote. And we are on to correspondence and litigation, we have none, and then we can move to the city manager's report.
So, thank you, Mayor. Um, just a reminder for the public that's not here, um, but maybe watching the video, or not, um, so...
In Roner Park and Katari.
Right, so, um, the budget study session for the general fund is Tuesday evening, on May sixteenth at six-thirty PM, and as Craig announced earlier tonight, Public Works Week, um, is coming up, and on May twenty-fifth, the Corporation Yard will be open to the public from two-thirty to four-thirty, for, for, um, kids to play with power tools, or, maybe not, I don't know, that might be where, that might be, yeah. Yeah, don't, John, don't tell anyone at Rema if I said that.
They've done it before.
And, um, as you probably saw, down, downtown, the Public Works crew's been pressure washing the sidewalk, and that was, so that was long planned, that was, after the paving, that was the next step, was to pressure wash the sidewalks and clean them up, it's, it's all part of kinda cleaning up downtown, and the next step after that is to replant the planter areas downtown, so, anyway, it's, for me, it feels like five years ago when we made these plans, but, things take time, right, so they, it's, it's getting there, it's gonna look a lot nicer here soon, so, um, uh, I already told the council about the April eleventh webcast, which is, um, up on the city's website, and, um, on the DSP project, the downtown project, we are just working on the seat, the seat walls, and then punch list items, so, they're getting close to done there. And, um, so, recreation news, on May eighteenth, Star Kids Productions will open their Shrek, the musical junior show, with thirty-three participants, um, which I can guarantee you are gonna have a parking problem for. Um, there will be six shows through the twenty-first, and we expect it to be a great success, if, if the younger age group was engaged, and then for children's, uh, children eight through seventeen, we have three musical theater camps, um, this summer, including Moana, Mary Poppins, and the High School Musical, and other summer camps are open for registration, including lacrosse camp, soccer camp, two multi-sport camps, Spanish immersion camp, gymnastics camp, two Legos camp, uh, two Katari traditional day camps, and a counselor and training program for teens to learn real-life job skills and gain experience to prepare them for a future in camp counseling, so, if you know anyone that wants to get into CIT program, we'll be running one this summer. Um, also, Zumba Gold classes here Wednesday mornings, nine-thirty to ten-twenty in the Katari Room, which you all received a letter about, so you know about that one, and then, there's a parking letter, and then also, in July, we'll host our twenty-fifth annual Kids Day Parade, a festival, and we're currently seeking sponsors, vendors, and volunteers for the event on July eighth. And for more information on all these, or to register for any programs, you can call Ashley at six-six-five-four-two-two-two-two, or her email address, A Wilson, at katari-city.org, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Yes, John?
Have, has Ashley reached out with the, that CIT program, uh, the training program to, say, the local high schools? I'm just curious, if she has, great, if she hasn't, might be a good idea, there might, that might be a good audience for that?
I, you know, I honestly don't know, I'll ask her.
Yeah, thanks.
And, um, is it possible to add a honorary mayor camp?
Like, uh, training?
And training.
Yeah, mayors and training, excellent idea.
That was it?
That was it?
That was my question on that.
All right, then we can move on to city council member reports.
Have you got one?
Oh, well, good, then you may start.
I'll make it quick, but it'll be worth it, you'll be pleased, and this is basically S C T A, uh, information, but it also reflects more good work from our staff, I don't know when you... I don't know when you guys sleep, but I appreciate what you do. I'm very pleased to report as of Monday's meeting. O'Bags Cycle 2 Programming, one Bay Area grant, this is federal through MTC and then through SETA. Catati requested $675,000 for the East Catati Street Rehab Project, and that passed without any touching knives or any concern, even though people are always very nervous at these. Many people brought their staff and were kind of trying to protect, and I started with, do I need to worry? It all went fine. As well as Transformation Development Act, Article III, TDA III projects, this comes off a statewide quarter cent sales tax, and this is Article III, if it's about 2% or something like, a very small set aside that's distributed. But we were one of only the three submitted projects, along with Santa Rosa and Petaluma, so Catati was right up there, and we will receive our full request of 90K, 78K this year, and then 6K from the next two-year cycle for what will, I believe, be a very nice bicycle pedestrian wayfinding signage program. So, I wanted to bring it up just to let us know that good news, but all, let the community know, but also congratulate staff. You know, this is the benefit, one of the benefits of Measure G is actually having a full staff that has time to go through the process to keep on top of these things and apply for these things, because it's not an easy process. There's a lot of time, there's a lot of involvement, but to see all these things happening is just great, so, thanks to you. And that's my report.
Yeah, I'll just add that, Craig and Vicki did a fabulous job getting that. I think whenever, whenever there's money, road money on the table, it's, yeah, it's blood, there's blood in the water, it's like chum, you know, it's bad.
Oh, there was concern about both these from different perspectives, people were, I mean, there were people lined up in the audience to try and corner, and I will say for the good of, there was now the agreements that the tack put together held very nicely, and there was no last-minute shenanigans, so everything worked very well. And as Director Rabbit, which I thought was very nice, you have three requests and there's three rewards. Anybody got a complaint with that? He had a good point, you can't do much better than that, so, so good job, thank you.
John, do you have?
No, I, I'll save it for next meeting, I do have another meeting coming up with REMF, and at that meeting, I can bring back the numbers that we're looking at for next year. And we are doing great on the self-funded health plan, so that's good. The other plan's not so good, but the health is good. So I'll bring that back at the next meeting, after I update from the upcoming meeting. And that's it on that.
Great, Wendy, do you have any?
Very quickly, we had a Water Bond conference call on the 26th, that went really well. I also was around on the 29th for the first annual Catati Rod. So, anyway, there were a lot of fun and teams that were out there and costumed, and they were all stopping at the downtown establishments in between the legs of the race and everything, so that was, it seemed like it was really a lot of fun. May 1st, libraries are now open on Mondays. So that's very exciting news, and that's all I have to report out for this time. Thank you.
So, I will just briefly report on Sonoma County Ag and Open Space District, a couple of issues. There's been this Vital Lands Initiative that's been going on, it's kind of like the long-term, like a general, city's general plan, and looking at the long-term and future for the Ag and Open Space District. So the public meetings had quite a bit of turnout, too. Hillsborough had 40 people, Forestville 50, Petaluma 100-plus, Santa Rosa 100-plus, and Sonoma about 30. And they're going to take now to, sort of the next step, starting May 16th, I don't have the dates in my head, but there's four public meetings, and they're going to focus on various aspects. One is going to be green belts and community separators, one on ag, one on natural resources, and one on recreation and urban open space. It's all on the website for Ag and Open Space District, so people can check those out, but those are like, kind of three-hour-long public meetings that they're going to hold. And another thing we looked at, which has got a lot of serious complications for the long-term viability of the district, you know, there's, we're still another 20-something years away with the most recent initiative that was passed to fund it, and there's a lot of money. I mean, you're looking at tens of millions of dollars that's available. But the big problem is that we've taken on a number of open space easements, those have monitoring in perpetuity, and there's a lot of money involved, because this is currently a tax that does have a sunset. And so, the real concern is, right now, we're going to do a cost allocation study and probably look at trying to offload those easements, if possible. And certainly, I think at this point, we've made a recommendation to the board, so the Board of Supervisors is the board for the district, to not even take on any more easements. It's just, it's too costly, because it's a never-ending cost, it just goes on in perpetuity. So, there's a little bit of foresight there, I'm not sure why it's taken so long to get to that stage, but that's kind of where the district is right now. And back to that Vital Lands Initiative, it's going to the Board of Directors sometime in the fall, there's no firm date yet. So, if people want to go to the public meetings, take a look at the website, because like I said, there's some very specific ones, and they're not very long, they're only about three hours. Thank you.
Thank you. I attended the compost community meeting, it was well-attended by a lot of people interested in getting compost back in, into the county, and had a lot of good questions. There was a lot of folks that were backyard vegetable growers, and they were really very concerned, and there was, they got a lot of information that they didn't even know existed on places that they could go right now to get compost, so it was good, and the questions by some of the vendors that were there were really good, too. I also attended the WAC meeting, the Water Agency meeting, and I attended the North Bay Division meeting in Nevada, and it was held at the Buck Center, which is a really, really awesome building. I, you know, having worked in Nevada for, you know, 30 years and saw it up on the hill, never actually got to go up in it, and it is a really, really beautiful, beautiful building. So, the CEO, who is newly the CEO, he came and talked to us about some of the work that they're doing on aging, and they're doing some pretty, pretty cool stuff to kind of keep us going for, for a few more years. So, I guess the key thing out of that, he said, is watch vitamin D. Vitamin D has some pretty redeeming qualities, so keep your eye on that. And then at the meeting, they had a homeless discussion, and they have a thing in San Rafael that they modeled from, oh, I forget, it was somewhere in East Bay, I think, and they call it Downtown Streets Teams, but they take people that are homeless, and they actually put them to work cleaning up the downtown. So they clean up all the garbage, and they, and they clean the streets, and they pick up bud, that, you know, cigarette butts, and it gives them, it really gives them, they said, they build teams that provide dignity, hope, purpose, and a path out of homelessness. And they had two gentlemen there that were in the program, and one guy had, they gave him his, as they call it, his purple shirt, because he had risen in the ranks, and he's kind of a team leader now in that. So it was a really good program to help people. And they're doing some other things with the homeless, but. It might have been Fremont, yeah, 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 so, let's see. Yesterday, I toured the new materials recycling facility out at Republic. It's not quite operational yet, but boy, is it a massive piece of stuff that they have going on there. And in addition to that, it's pretty incredible, you know, just the amount of stuff that comes in there that they move, and, you know, at least working, one of the eye-opening things that I saw, just in the, in the time we were in there looking at the machinery, and it's maybe something that, you know, we ultimately have to do something different with, but I can't believe the number of mattresses that came in, it was just unbelievable, just car after car, I'm just like, what is this mattress return day? And he said, they were saying also that, like, last month, in the month of April, they had a whole lot of appliances that got brought in, and they kind of attributed that to people getting their tax refunds back, and so they were, you know, doing, you know, kind of improvements in their house and getting new appliances, but, so more work to do on that. So, that's really all I have to report. So. No comments? No comments from you? All right. Okay. Then is there any public comment on non-action agenda items? Seeing none, I will close public comment on that item. And information received after the agenda was posted?
Nothing then, nothing new that's already been discussed.
Okay. And so then with that, we will adjourn this meeting at 10:45. Thank you.